The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now being called to a quarter. We will have an invocation by Councilman James Flurry and Councilman Nicholson will lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now let us pray. Almighty God, we come today with humble hearts, thanking you, oh God, for the many blessings that you bestowed upon this great city of Shreveport. We pray daily, God, that you are blessed and anoint and watch over all of the administration and workers that carry on the day-to-day work. Give them safety and watch over them, Lord, as they do their duties. Now go with us and bless us. Let us be mindful that God, this day, has been given to us by you. And let us rejoice and be glad in him. Now it's in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost that I pray. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, if you'd call a roll, please.
Councilman President.
Present.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Present.
Councilman Burks.
Present.
Councilman Adori.
Present.
Councilman Adori.
Here. Tomorrow I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last administrative conference on the 25th and the council meeting that was on the 26th. Does any councilman have any awards or distinguished guests at this time they'd like to recognize? Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Chief Eddie Walker and Detective Heather Butcher up to visit with us about the teal walk. Good afternoon to you both. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for inviting.
We have a new microphone up and trying it out, so if something, if we don't hear you, might have to get you to adjust it a little bit, but go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I hear it so much better.
I'd like to thank you guys for inviting us today. We have a few things we want to share, some of the good things that are going on at Centenary College and the fact that Centenary College is part of our community. We try to reach out and reach out into our community and share the good things that we're doing, especially as it revolves around domestic violence and sexual assault awareness. And with April being Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Detective Butcher here has put up some amazing events and with support from Project Celebration here, we're just so thrilled of the things that are going on to bring awareness to sexual assault and domestic violence. And I'm gonna let Detective Butcher mention the award that we just received this week from the Louisiana Foundation Against Sexual Assault. We'll be traveling to Baton Rouge, Wincie, to receive this award. Want me to say? So we've been honored to receive the Ally of the Year Award for assisting organizations here in the community. So Centenary College will be receiving the Ally of the Year from La Fossa, which is the Louisiana Foundation Against Sexual Assault. So we're thrilled about that.
And Saturday we are having our first, we've never done it before, so we hope that it will be the best. It's called the Teal Walk. And all the, we're not asking for, it's not, it's free to the public. We are trying to get donations for Project Celebration and we are asking for scrubs, socks, underwear, any sex, any size, and they need to be in packages. But the teal walk, actually, the fun walk starts at 10:30, but at 10 is the registration and they can bring the donations at that time. And then after the walk, we are giving Project Celebration all the donations we received during the walk. And we'd love to see everyone's time.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you both very much.
Can we just bring those donations there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Butcher.
Well, as everybody knows, Heather and I have the same last name. That's my wife. I'm very proud of her for what she's done. She's been at Centenary now for about eight years, was at SPD before, and I'm very proud of the award that they've won. I'll be going down with them on Wednesday as well to watch them accept it. The walk, it starts, where do they need to come for your walk?
The main entrance.
The main entrance of Centenary.
Centenary Columbia.
I've been told that I can make that one mile, so I'll be there. Thank you and congratulations.
That's it, just one?
Yeah, just one mile, that's it.
Well, I'm glad Ms. Heather will be there, so she'll be able to assist you.
She'll walk the rest for me.
Any other councilman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anybody to recognize, but I do want to express my appreciation to Fire Chief Woolton and the administrative staff of the Shreveport Fire Department. And I don't know how I missed the email, but I went back and he did see one, and I think he sent one to all of us to come out to the Fire Academy on Saturday to participate and witness a demonstration of the apparatus of the Shreveport Fire Department. The mayor and I showed up and, as well as Ben Riggs, but it was a very educational and enlightening experience. I never saw the fire department from that perspective. I would encourage next year, and I think they have it again, that all elected officials in the city, as well as any interested people, should go out and just critique of the way the operations of the fire department is executed. It was very impressive, very, 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 very detailed, and I appreciate that, Chief. You know, they dressed us up in, you know, in the various attire that firefighters have to engage in, and I was dressed up real nice, me and the mayor. But I was, and they was teasing me coming in, how hard it was to get out of the uniform, especially these shoes. I think I had one size too small, but anyway.
Somebody told me that you tried to run out soon as you ran into fire.
I did. I'd say for me, if I got their expertise, but that firefighting ain't mine, I don't tell you. But it was absolutely impressive and educational, so thank you, Mayor. It was really, it was really a nice morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Green.
Yes. I wanted to ask, Heather, where can we get this teal shirt? Is there any special place that, I see y'all say wear teal. Is there any special place you can buy a teal shirt?
Just wear a teal.
In the coat. Just get your coat on.
Oh, okay. I'll just give you that teal, oh, thank you. All right.
Councilman Green, you and I about the same size. I think I got extra.
All right, big deal. I appreciate it.
Councilman Fuller. I'm sorry, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go back to this fireman deal. I know I saw Councilman Bradford on Facebook and he did look very professional, but he has forgotten that, Councilman Bowman, that you went out to the fire department and did that, and you helped the song, sequel to the song, "They Call Me The Fireman." So, you know, you were the original trailblazer in that, and I still remember those photos with the helmet on.
I tell you, I hate I missed this time. It really is inspirational and educational for those who really don't understand what the firemen go through. So I appreciate Chief Woolton putting that on every year. Councilman Flurry, you want to speak on, Councilwoman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that Councilwoman Lavette Fuller has been, had some surgery and will miss us a few days, and we want to extend our prayers and a speedy recovery for her to be back very soon.
Can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
I talked to her at lunch today and she said be sure to tell everybody that she is watching and will be sending periodic texts, especially if Councilman Green and I get into any kind of conversation.
I'll be a kitten today.
All right. If there's no other councilman, Mayor, do you have any?
Yeah, a couple of different announcements. First thing, I just want to touch on what Councilman Bradford already pointed out with Fire Ops 101. It was the third annual Fire Ops 101, but it allowed elected officials to come out and really experience what our firefighters do across multiple fronts. We got EMS demonstrations, full EMS demonstrations. I was able to use the jaws of life on a car and cut off the hood of a car, went into a building, put out a fire, and just, I mean, it was a blast on Saturday morning. And I think probably the funnest part of it was, it took me, it took us longer to get Councilman Bradford out of his chute than it did for me to put out a fire. No, but the firemen absolutely loved seeing local leaders participate. And then even if you couldn't make it this year, I would encourage everybody to please come out next year. I'm actually gonna encourage our departmental staff, some of our department heads, to get out there next year. And me and Chief Woolton are doing, we're probably better coordinate to be off the state legislative cycle next year as well, so we can get some state legislators out there. But I would encourage anybody, if you get the opportunity to do it, it was, we had a blast. And the food was, what'd you think about the food, Councilman?
Excellent.
It was amazing, yeah. Firemen can cook. So thank you again to Shreveport Fire Department for hosting that. Next, this Saturday, I'll be at the Great American Cleanup. I'll be at the Fairgrounds Saturday, April 13th, participating, and it starts at 8:00 a.m. There'll be prizes will be handed out, we'll be cleaning up around the old baseball stadium. There will also be awards, and the group with the most volunteers will win an award as well, and the group that collects the most trash. So I'm looking forward to getting out of there. You know, when I was campaigning, I ran on a clean city platform, and that's not just making decisions like hiring a director for property standards, but there's also volunteering my personal time and going out and cleaning up the community like we did on MLK Day, and I'll continue to do that. So that's just one more attempt of us dedicating my personal time, and I hope that everyone else is doing it as well. We also have a new economic development coordinator. Is Brandon here? I don't see him in the audience. So we had a new economic development coordinator named Brandon Phill. He'll definitely be here tomorrow, but he's a graduate of Harvard University and Yale Law School. He's also the former engagement manager for McKinsey &amp; Company, one of the world's leading consulting firms in business. And he's also a local business owner as well, so I'd just like to welcome him to the team, and I'll introduce him again tomorrow during the council meeting as well. We announced our summer internship program a couple of days ago, the Future Leaders of Shreveport Summer Internship Program, and we have over 100 slots, but I want to let the council know that as of this morning, we had over 450 applicants. Yeah, 450 applicants. That shows you the appetite for our local area students that want to do internship programs right here in our local economy. So I'm very impressed by that. The summer program, some more details about it, high school students will make $10 an hour, college students will make $12 an hour. It's an eight-week program, and they'll work 30 hours a week. So you can go to shreveportla.gov to sign up, and the window closes on April 15th. So like I said, we already got a lot of applicants, and we talked to some other private entities today. Private businesses can help support by donating funds so that we can expand our program or by hosting interns themselves. So we talked to some private entities today, so we think we'll get more opportunities for that. I mean, I'm hoping we can get two, even 300, students involved this summer. So for private businesses looking for internships this summer, please reach out, we'd love to partner with you. An update on the recycling, now that we've, now that the sanitation fee, we've settled that, we actually, my staff went out to Pratt to do a tour and to get some background on the operation out there, and fortunately we found that the, you know, there was, there was a bit of rumor in that they don't recycle anything. They are recycling about 80% of the material that they are getting, well, a little bit over that as a matter of fact. They're recycling everything except glass. So I got the numbers right in front of me. The mixed paper is 59%, cardboard 4%, plastic and water bottles 4%, aluminum 10, 2%, steel 3%, and it's like 16% of trash in it. And they encouraged us to let our citizens know that everything is not recyclable. They have found everything in the recycling thing from, and recyclable being from household trash to bowling balls to dead deer. So if we could just keep recycles in the blue trash bin, then we'll, they'll be a lot better off and able to kind of sort through the things more appropriately. So that's good news, and we're just gonna continue to do work to try to figure out how to make their program more sustainable. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would be remiss if I did not mention, for those who won't be participating in the Great American Cleanup on Saturday, that there's another event, a very worthwhile event. It's called the Walk for Humanity. It's a five-run mile walk that will be held on the Clifan Parkway. It's sponsored by the Institute for Global Outreach, and that director is Velma Jean Talver. It's gonna be a great event. It's a fundraiser, certainly, but as well as an opportunity to raise consciousness of the, those who suffer in, not only in America, but also in Africa. You can sign up, it's not too late. You can contact her at the office, but she's also have a website that you can, that you can sign up if you want to walk on Saturday, and that's runup, runsignup.com/race/lsriport walkforhumanity. And I'll be participating in that walk, but I have also some constituents within my district to be participating in the cleanup as well. So if you're not doing anything, then do something, and the walk is a very great option to just be in at the house at morning. Starts at 8:00. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Green.
Councilman Flurry, if you want to go, I got some extra jogging pants.
They're all the same size.
Yeah, we're the same size.
All right. Mayor, when you spoke earlier on private entities that wanted to join with the workforce, is churches, would churches be included? There was a Morning Star called and asked if it was okay that they want, they had.
Yeah, if they want to sponsor, yeah, if churches wants to sponsor summer internships, they absolutely have an opportunity to do so. I mean, like I said, we, you know, right now, we're a little bit over 100 with job opportunities, but have over 400 applicants. I want the whole community to get involved. It's something that I said in the press conference, and I said it again this morning when I was speaking to Byrd High School students, this isn't just a high school summer intern program. This is a message and a signal to our youth in our community, that the community cares about them, that we're investing in them, that there are opportunities here. So this isn't something that, you know, I want, I want everybody to be involved with this. This is something that we want to give hope to students who actually like Shreveport, want to come back to Shreveport, and we want to show them what our community, what our community really looks like when they, when we wrap our arms around them. So anybody that wants to get involved, we'd be happy to.
All right. We'll do that. There are no other announcements. Mr. Green, you come forward, please. Any member have any concerns, anything related to the property standard?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
On the issue we talked about, I'd just like to give her 90 more days.
Okay.
All right.
We don't know nothing about that, Councilman Green.
Tell them about it.
The appeals case. It didn't come up yet.
Don't be speaking about it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Green. Thank you, Mr. Green.
No public hearing today. Ms. Jones, is there any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that we're aware of.
All right. We have the following, we have anyone to speak. No request to speak today. We have the following executive appointments to be considered tomorrow, and I see. Ms. Aaron slipped in on me. How you doing today, Ms. Erin McConaughey? That'll be for tomorrow, then? If it's.
Was she, I mean, she wants to speak? Yeah. Welcome me to speak at the chairman's pleasure today.
Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm fine.
No, well, I mean, procedure-wise, we need to suspend the rules to light the handle. If you have supported that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Oh my God, thank you for this. This new microphone, I appreciate it. My name is Erin McCardy. My address is 6341 Westport Avenue, Shreveport.
Are you voting? I see some.
We did vote, didn't we?
But not everybody.
I think everybody voted. Flurry, did you vote? Okay. Sorry about that.
Do we need to repeat the address? 6341 Westport Avenue, Shreveport 71129. Thank you for letting me speak today. I rise today as a mother. I'm old enough to be most of your mothers, for a few of you, and I know that your mother, if what happened to your child, your mother would have risen for you. I watched my child treat, be treated unfairly in the city I love. Let me calm down. My son tried to keep his best friend from being harmed by his girlfriend. They'd been drinking, it was New Year's Eve. It happened in my home. My son got the keys of this woman and kept them from her to keep her from driving drunk that night. She went ballistic. She swung on my son, she kicked him in the groin, she tried to kick him in the groin again. You guys, I witnessed it. I watched it with my own eyes. I asked both gentlemen what they wanted to do. Do they want to call police? Do they want her locked up? Neither of the men said they did. They said, no, we don't want to go through that. She ultimately continued to scream, holler, make a chaotic night for me and for these two men, and we ultimately let her leave, against my best judgment. I tried to get her to go to breakfast with me, go for a ride with me. I had not been drinking. She would not. She left, she called her father, who came to town from Fort Worth directly. They went to the Shreveport Police Department. They filed a complaint. The father called the best friend during all this, I'm gonna run over my time and I apologize, said he was gonna kill him. You better go into hiding, 'cause I'm going to end you. That's a direct quote. You better never show your face again, son. I'm going to kill you. Fast forward the clock to 10 o'clock the next morning, New Year's Day. The friend gets a call from a blocked number. This person claims to be a Shreveport police officer, who says, if you guys don't come down to the station by 2:00 p.m., we're gonna issue a warrant for your arrest. I called the patrol desk, I have a few people I know, and I said, is this how we operate in Shreveport? Is there a warrant gonna be issued for my son's arrest? No, Erin, it's New Year's Day, there's not gonna be a warrant issued for your son's arrest. They don't handle things like that, and we don't call from blocked numbers. We call you from a 673 number. So my brain, I've worked in domestic violence, you guys, for 25 years. My brain says, this is a setup.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to extend Ms. McCardy's time.
I apologize. I'll wrap it up as quick as I can. I'm not bringing my son and his best friend into an ambush of a man who's threatened to kill one of them. So we do not go to the police station that day. January 2nd, I'm at work, 7:30 in the morning, my son calls me and says, Mom, they're here to arrest me. My son was to leave for the Navy Special Dive Team at the end of January. We are still here today. He is still here today. He could not leave until this was disposed of. Praise God, it's been disposed of for my son, and I thank those who've helped. I'm here today, guys and ladies, sorry, she's not here, for those who don't know how to navigate the system, for those who get arrested in Moretown and in MLK and in Western Hills, who don't know what to do to get their son out of jail. Mine spent eight hours down there. Mine was trying to keep a drunk driver from going on our streets. He was kicked. I didn't tell you that his son, his best friend, had a black eye and blood coming down his face? He was harmed, too. And I know we want to protect domestic violence victims, but sometimes the story is not the full story. I witnessed it, and to this day, the arresting officers have not contacted me, to this day. What's happening in your guys' neighborhoods? What's happening to regular people? I love the police, and 99% of the time, they do a great job, but why were five patrol cars at my home on, at 7:30 in the morning on January 2nd? Why did six police officers enter my home on January 2nd and come in my home, in my quiet subdivision, where everybody knows who lives in that townhouse? Do we not have anything better to do with those five police cars than come arrest two I ended there. My son will be fine. I'm worried about the guys and the people who come behind him, and I thank you for your time.
That was it to speak, right? No one left to speak? We have the following executive appointments to be considered tomorrow. Is anyone here, any of the appointments here?
Yeah, we have several, Chairman.
If they are, come up to the front if you'd like. Four hours here.
Yep. Mr. Murrow, Mr. Foster, can you come up to the front as well?
Would you like to speak first, if you gentlemen don't mind? Mr. Candace comes first, stand in front of the mic, please.
Is it a pay-up phone?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Candace Baptiste, and it is a pleasure to be standing before you today.
Let me see if you can turn one of them around. It's that one.
Is this the new one?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, since that's a church mic, I can go fix it. We got to take the.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ma, can you, can you bring it up? Just that.
How about now?
That's good.
Okay. So, hi, good afternoon. I'm Candace Baptiste. I am so excited to be here as an appointee, and I love downtown Shreveport. I made sure that when I was tapped for State Director of the organization, Spread the Vote and Project ID, that it was headquartered right here in downtown Shreveport. That was very important to me, because even though it's a statewide organization, I know that in my travels, that wherever I go, I am representing Shreveport, and I'm representing all the good that we have here downtown. I know that with being one of the youngest people that would be on the board if I'm confirmed, that I bring a unique perspective, and it's not just diversity by race, but by age. When people ask me, well, what is the DDA doing and why is this important? I give it to them super short, and we are trying to make sure people know to come here to play, but also how do we get them to stay? Of course, I could go into the mission statement and tell you exactly what it is that they do, but what's important to me is making sure that if we are going to continue to have entertainment here, and with us growing, especially residential areas, that we are being equitable and that we are doing everything we can to be inclusive and have people here that understand that we care about all of them. One of the things that I saw when I was going over the budget and program of work was One of the things that I saw when I was going over the budget and program of work was that the homeless are a population that we're concerned with here, and because in my work, I'm helping with that, especially with Hope Connections. We don't need to just be addressing the issue of homelessness downtown simply because of revenue for developers and business owners, but because these are our people too. And so, I am committed to making sure that everyone who's in downtown Shreveport has not just a good time, but understands the necessity of making sure that they're safe, and making sure that people my age understand you can come down here, you can work, and you can also live. And I'm more than excited to make sure that in my travels up and down the state, that I'm representing downtown Shreveport, and that they know how awesome this place is too.
All right. I'm glad to have you down here myself, but Councilman Flair beeds in on me, so.
Oh, good.
No, I just wanted to say that I've had the pleasure of knowing Ms. Candace maybe over, right at a year now, maybe. And I'm just, I'm thrilled to see some of our young ones, and I say young because I told my age earlier, but I appreciate the work that you've done, that you have been doing in our community, and I just wanted to say I appreciate you on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Flair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you for willingness to serve, and you say your business is located downtown?
Yes, sir. We are right at the office hub on three-three-one Mylum Street.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and you also live in Shreveport?
No, I don't. Actually, I'm from Bossier Parish. I think that brings a unique perspective as well.
Well, the Lord forgive you. No, I want to thank you for the willingness to serve, okay? That's all I.
It's a privilege, sir.
Councilman, we want more Bossier people to be working in Shreveport, bringing their business to Shreveport, by the way.
Well, that's right now, so low. You hiring them all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, development is the key word in this commission. We got to, we got to, and we have an excellent director, Ms. Lisa Swain, been on there for so many years. So the board would be, would be her, her engine. And I'm just wondering, what do you, what do you see the potential of downtown from your perspective?
There is no cap.
There's no cap.
The potential is only limited by who we decide is important to help develop Shreveport, and what our priorities are to make sure that everyone knows that they are included. For me, that's huge. I have some people here today who, it's their first time ever coming to any type of city council meeting, work session, or otherwise. And when I talk about the unique perspective that I bring, development isn't just about what can be done in the next six months or the next couple of years, but what are the ideas that are coming from people in my peer group? What are their ideas for development? What are their ideas for residential plans going forward? With us having Shreveport coming, getting off the ground, what do we do to make sure that people know that they're invited and that they're welcome here? And so, I would have to say that my plan and what I want to focus on more than anything is making sure that we're equitable and that we're inclusive.
I appreciate that, that last part, because, and I use this analogy a lot, and I don't have to tell you, I think the councilmen all agree that our love for Shreveport is there, but we don't see Shreveport as Shreveport is, we see Shreveport as we are. And I think Erin McCarty just sort of demonstrated that, that the experiences that Shreveporters have on the north side of town are completely different than they have on the southeast part of town.
Absolutely.
Shreveport is different when you look at who is bringing a proposal to the table. We look for opportunities. I think every opportunity to bring development into downtown should be, should be given its highest consideration. But sometimes, we look at who's bringing it, and we don't consider that a serious proposal, so we shun it to the side, and that's not fair. And I'm saying, I want an authority that's going to be very progressive and looking at opportunity, because we are liking, and I had, and the council understands that, demographically, what we, what's our makeup? Our makeup in regards to wealth and prosperity, poverty, and unemployment, is real. And oftentimes, you know, and I'm glad the mayor just mentioned that, we have a new economic development person on staff now, so we got to, we got to leave no stone unturned to look at opportunities. Downtown is the, is the key. We need to, we need to start voting or stop annexing, annexing so much on the premises. We need to bring economy back into Shreveport, and downtown is the prime.
I agree.
Place to go.
And you're getting into sprawl, which is, you know, something that I've looked at as well. We have so many historic buildings down here already, and I know that we're already getting tax credits because.
Sure.
They were able to identify even more buildings that were eligible for that. I'm so interested in what can we do to identify more of those buildings, and how can we repurpose those instead of having to continue building out? Let's use what we already have here, and that doesn't just go for buildings with me, that goes for the people too. We don't necessarily need to keep going outside when we have so much talent here, and it goes beyond what potential we have, but what can we do to make sure that they have those same tools and resources to realize that potential? And if they don't even know that something like the DDA exists, then they're starting behind. This is not just about what can Candace do on the board, this is what information can I bring back to the community? What can I do to make sure that people understand that these are the ways that decisions are being made? And let's not start when you decide that you might decide, you might want to run for office. How do I get them involved in high school? When we talk about graffiti, and then we talk about the murals that also need to be upkept, why aren't we also making sure that we're bridging that gap? We know that they have the artistic talent, they're just using it in a way that isn't necessarily productive. Why don't we have our own students here, making sure that our murals are upkept, that they're out here having their artwork displayed? If we care about creativity and we care about art, let's make sure that we're reaching down to the younger people, so that as they age, they know, "The DDA came to me, they wanted us to be involved downtown." That's just, that's just one example, but I totally agree with you.
Well, I could tell you that your presentation got my vote already.
Thank you.
Because your understanding, your understanding of what is needed, I think is very clear to me, and I'd want you to make these same expressions and sentiments to the board in helping to direct that.
I just have ideas, I'm also here to learn, I don't assume that I know everything. There's so much that I still have to learn, but I think that that's not something that should be counted against myself or anyone else that's coming up with wanting to be involved and being civically engaged. There is so much to learn, but it can't just stop with me. How do I make sure I'm taking the things that I learned, and I'm making sure that everyone else has an opportunity to have access to that as well?
Well, I didn't want to delay the meeting much longer. I would reach out to you as well.
Please do.
Because I like, I like, I like some of your thoughts and ideas, and I want to share some more ideas that may, we can, as well, like I say, Lisa Swain is a jewel, a champion for Shreveport, and I want you to help her.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council.
If no one else, then that's, thank you so much, Ms. Candace, I appreciate you. Is Dr. Benjamin Foster?
I want to say thank you to the distinguished gentlemen and women that I see here today. I have never been in this room before, and I had no idea about the extremes and emotion that will actually be exhibited here. When I heard some of the testimony and the comments made by this other, this young lady here, that it really struck me, it really, you know, I'm a Shreveporter too, and we love all of our citizens, and we want to see the best for everybody. I feel like I've been working towards this moment for a long time.
Dr. Foster, will you state your address, just so we have a good record?
My, oh, excuse me, my address is six-twenty Southern Trace Parkway, Shreveport.
Thank you, sir.
What's your zip code?
Seven-eleven-zero-six.
Thank you.
Yeah, not zero-five. And I have a business that I established in nineteen-eighty-two here in Shreveport, after a lot of people encouraged me to come to Shreveport, they needed a young, new orthodontist there, and it's been a wonderful journey for me. The people of Shreveport, the citizens of Shreveport have embraced me, and through that, our orthodontic practice has been able to achieve the top three percent of orthodontic practices nationwide. A small business here in Shreveport can certainly accomplish that, and many have and many are. So we're proud of that fact. I've been a real estate developer, I have a real estate development here in Shreveport with commercial property, one in Bossier that I developed with commercial property, I developed a house in New Orleans with commercial property. And we're still looking for investment opportunities in Shreveport, in the commercial side of things. We see so much potential in downtown, in the development, in some of these historic buildings and things such as that. But really, I'm here to talk about the aviation status that we are in at Shreveport right now, and I know we're, we're in sort of a state of flux, and maybe some changes are going to be made here. I've prepared, like I said, for this time, for over a thousand hours. I've been flying airplanes first, I've been mentored by FAA examiners, commercial jet pilots, and I've come to have a lot of friends in aviation. It's a very passionate community. And these individuals, I've talked with many of my mentors, and they all suggested that I consider doing this as a volunteer, because they thought that I would do a good job for Shreveport in representing the government, representing the FAA, the Shreveport Airport Authority, as well as the pilots downtown and at regional. And I think we can come up to some very, with some very good ideas, to move our airports, our management in a positive direction for the benefit of all the citizens of Shreveport. I think that's what I bring to it. I want to be a liaison from the government to the aviation world, and help you accomplish some of the things that you want to accomplish, and also help for you to understand maybe some of the thoughts and the feelings of the pilots in our community as well. So I think it's a good idea for the board to consider having some pilots or people heavily involved in aviation on the board, they will bring you a perspective that maybe you haven't heard in the past. For example, our metro aviation gentleman here, this is an extremely valuable asset to our community, to Shreveport, and what they bring to our economy. And I really feel like there's a lot of economic potential that is still there and could be developed for the benefit of all of our citizens. So with that, I'll leave you. I hope that you will consider me for this position. If you have any questions, I'm.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Flair.
Thank you. Dr. Foster, I appreciate your sentiments, I thought that was right on point, and the fact that you are in aviation, you're a pilot, you have a plane down?
Yes, sir. Downtown.
Downtown. Now, my question is, what usually happens in these type of confirmation hearings is that the mayor recommends people, there's some, there's some boards and committees and commissions that we take more serious than others. I mean, usually, I think, over the time of this body, the authority, we usually just rubber-stamp the mayor's recommendation. But I found that to be, in most cases, not to be very, very intelligent or prudent, because we need to best qualify people doing things that could help uplift and create a very strong working apparatus within all boards and commissions. So your experience seemed to be what we may need, because we are, the airport, I think, is still a sleeping, a sleeping giant as relates to what it's potential to be. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
So, I'm not talking about the regional now. Councilman Flair and I have visited the downtown airport last Thursday, Wednesday. You frequent there, right?
Right.
Okay. What's your impression of the appearance of the downtown airport?
The airport needs to improve its appearance.
Okay.
And reinvest maybe some in our infrastructure. I'm talking about in the terminal building and a few things around the airport.
I'm talking about the whole, the whole.
Well, our runway system is wonderful, and they're working on that.
Yeah, sure.
There's a lot of really excellent things about our airport that I totally love, and there's a few things that I think we need to work on.
Let me ask you this way, you fly to various airports around the country?
I do.
And when you get out your plane and you see the, see the yard, the grounds, you grasp an impression of that airport?
That's correct.
And I'm saying that we need an impression of our downtown airport, because that's what a lot of our business men, businesswomen come into, and they see airport, and they, I mean, and I'm submitting something to the, to the mayor and to the council of the appearance. I took pictures, and I'm like, if I got out of my car, or out of my plane and walked along that runway to get to the terminal, I would be like, where am I? Am I in some town in the country somewhere? So I'm looking for, I'm looking for those individuals that will express their needs and try to come up with the, with the collective understanding from the other members to say, "Listen, we need to reinvest resources into upgrading our facilities," as well as looking at opportunities that we can bring in more flights and we can get our prices down. We've got too many people driving to Longview and to Dallas to catch a plane, and I don't understand that.
I don't understand that. I haven't had the opportunity to critically evaluate numbers, but I know, as a businessman, you know, you have to run your business with those numbers before you. There's percentages that you should be using yearly to reinvest into your infrastructure. There's a certain percentage that you should be devoting to staff, there's a certain percentage you should be devoting to maintenance, facilities, community outreach, advert, all of that. You have budgets for those sort of things, I haven't had an opportunity to look at those critically. But the one thing that really just struck me was when I saw in the, and I read a lot of aviation management, especially since I've been, you know, thinking about maybe this being a possibility for me, where the FAA audited the downtown airport and said something in the effect of that thirty years of mismanagement. And that really struck me, and I thought, I don't think we're doing maybe as well as we should be.
And I appreciate that, because I like transparency, I like, I like, I like understanding candidacy, and I think you're expressing those things, and I'm saying, if that's the condition of the airport in twenty-nineteen, the impression of those that evaluate our entities, then it means that we wasn't doing a good job to get to a point to where they're, we're getting low grades on some things that we need to be very professional, and the standards should be higher.
Correct.
So, Dr., I appreciate you, and I think you make a great addition to the airport. You, I think you have, since you're a pilot, you know a lot of people down there, and you can get feedback from them on things that need to happen to improve the airport as well.
I've been already doing that.
You're already doing that?
Already doing it. Been visiting and talking, and talking with my mentors, they've all encouraged me to come down here and get involved and be a participant.
Dr. Foster, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Foster, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Councilman Flory.
Dr. Foster, I have a question, too, for you, please. I was glad I went downtown to the airport, Councilman Bradford, that's in his district, because I thought he was going to break down in tears because he is such a stickler on cleanup, and it looked horrible down there. And it just made us, matter of fact, we thought we saw, I thought I saw Sandra Bullock flying in down there, but I said something to Councilman Bradford, and he said, no, that's not Sandra Bullock, because I know Sandra Bullock, and she would have spoken to me. But it was horrible. They had mowed the grass, but they had not weeded it. And it looked like crap. And we got a restrict there in that place. I'm sure you've flown out of downtown many times.
I fly out of there weekly.
And, and we did see a lot of people that I've seen on TV flying in there in private jets and coming in, eating. And so we want to be real proud of what we showcase to the city, and I know the mayor does, too, and he will probably be on top of that. But the other thing I wonder, because it's been said, now, I must admit to you that I don't have all the facts in this, but it's been said to me that the FAA is hot on our tail. And I don't know exactly what all that encompasses, but I understand what little bit I know about it is they're looking at our operations closely. So I hear you, say you were trained by an FAA?
Examiner.
Examiner.
He encouraged me to do it as well.
Maybe you can help us in that area and get them, get them off our tail, you know?
We want them to be ecstatic with our airports, our airport systems, our management, our airport appearance. The pilots down there want the same thing.
Yeah.
The pilots down there are willing to step up and pay their fair share. They're not looking to slack out of here. They're wanting to do what's right by the airport. They're wanting to meet the standards that should be met. They don't mind paying the rent that should be fair and equitable based upon other airports of similar size throughout the country. They're all in favor of that. They do have a few things that they want to talk about. I don't think this is the time for me to maybe get into some of those things, but I think there will be opportunity for that down the road if you're interested in me helping you with that. I'd be more than happy to.
Well, thank you very much, sir.
Councilman Butcher.
Dr. Foster. I'm going to make the stand a little bit longer. I appreciate your willingness to serve. I think, I think you live in my district, so, and your level of expertise is good. I, too, went to the downtown airport Friday before last. By the way, the money and the time that Commissioner Chavez and Megan had put into Tempo Eatery out there is amazing. The food's wonderful. We went to eat lunch there, and when I pulled up, I don't think Councilman Flory and Councilman Bradford saw what I saw. The grass was about knee-high. It looked, it looked awful. And Mr. Green, if you're looking for, Mr. Terrence Green, if you're looking for any property standard violations, turn into the downtown airport and look to your right. There's a building that looks like worse than the, than the property that we talked about earlier in Councilman Nicholson's district. I am 100% for anything that makes our airport better because it is a first impression that people have coming into Shreveport. The mayor and I have had long discussions about this. You live in my district, I believe, that the other appointee lives in my district, and the two that are, that are going to be replaced live in my district. So I'm glad to see the participation from District D in this, and I think you'll do an excellent job. So I just wanted to add that because I don't know if you'll be here tomorrow or not, but I appreciate your willingness to serve.
It's my pleasure.
Councilman Butcher, can you tell us what your secret is getting all those people?
Hey, we're just a really, we're just public service-oriented in District D.
Well, God bless you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Dr., appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lloyd Brown, why don't we hear from you if you will?
Hey, good afternoon, and thank you for having me. My name's Lloyd Brown and been nominated to serve on the DDA Board. I am a Shreveport resident. My address is 926 Unidilla Street and work downtown here in the Capital One building. And I work for Kinsey Interest, which is a local family office, and serve as their chief investment officer. And certainly excited about the opportunity to serve on the DDA with Liz, and have had the opportunity to meet Candace, so I'm excited to work with her and get to know her through this process. Councilman Bradford, you know, your point about development in downtown, I look at it from the perspective of trying to develop companies to come downtown and to fill our existing office space. I think it's a great opportunity for young companies that are strapped for cash to come and find cheap opportunities or cheap, relatively cheap, I should say, office space and in a great environment to work in.
Yeah. Mr. Brown, I, I, I think there's no one-size-fits-all approach to developing, okay? We got some people that, according to their, their ability, would take basic buildings, renovate them, refurbish them, and have a great opportunity to do business. There are others who may want to have a bigger vision of what they want to encompass. So if somebody wants to, wants to come in and redevelop a whole area, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to discourage them. I would try to encourage whatever, because again, we don't have the luxury to, to, to give anybody any indication that we don't want them to be a part of our business apparatus. We need to take it to the limit to see where it would go regardless. And I'm just saying, as an authority downtown, recruiting and creating, I think we got NICU's now. I think we got the department, the residential is coming on, and we just need to, we just need to bring more, more activity after dark, not after dark, but after five, okay? I mean, we just, we just need, we just need a more vibrant downtown, and it could be a destination to, to be lively. And everybody's not prepared to do that. I mean, if you go to downtown now, you'll see a very, you won't see a lot of diversity. You'll see a lot of white-collar business, R&amp;D people, but you don't see a blue-collar presence. And I think that's what we're missing. And we don't see the diversity of people like we should see downtown. So, so I'm just saying, let's create an attraction to downtown and not allow anybody to ever feel like we don't value what they're, what they want to do, what their vision doing. There was a guy that came to Shreveport about 20 years ago. He was, he was from Shreveport, he lived in, he lived, he passed away, but his name was Montel Dawson. Montel Dawson worked for General Motors for over 40 years, and he accommodated, accumulated a lot of, a lot of wealth. And he came back and he, and he donated $200,000 to LSU's, he was a black guy, to LSU's for, for an endowment for his, for his mother who, who worked. And a lot of people got upset with him. A lot of black people got upset with him. They said, Mr. Dawson, why did you come back here and donate $200,000 to LSU when Grambling and Southern needs funds? And Mr. Dawson, again, we don't know people's history. And Mr. Dawson, and the reason I know this because I'm, I met him because his mother worked for Willis Knight. And when, when, when Mr. Elrod met him as well and found out that he donated $200,000 for an endowment, Willis Knight did the same thing for scholarships that would be benefiting from their donation to LSU. But my point is that Mr. Dawson got a lot of criticism from Southern and Grambling Alumni at Shreveport, and he said, why would you, why would you, why would you donate money to LSU when, when Grambling and Southern needs, needs, these, these funds as well? He said, he said, you don't understand why I'm doing this. He said, but that's not the issue. The issue is, why would you even attempt to tell me what I can and cannot do with my own funds? And I'm saying, that's what we miss, miss, sometimes misunderstand why people do what they do, because we think that everybody should have our mindset and think like we think. And I'm saying that even in development, you know, well, we got a building over here and this should fit your knee. No, no, that, that may not fit my knee. Listen to me and let, and then, and then help me fashion something that would fit my knee. That's what we want. That's what we need downtown. And I, and I, and you downtown every day, so you see, you see, you see the weaknesses of downtown, I'm sure. But we can build on those strengths that we have, and I know that we have them because, because we, we, we can develop, and I, and I believe in the cliche, if you build it, if you develop it, they will come. Let's build something. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Flory.
Mr. Brown, thank you again also for willing to serve on this important committee. The thing that I wanted to point out is to, down under the bridge where the city owns all the club down there, I tried to, Councilman Bradford and I have been down there on numerous occasions. He won't go to the club, but he will go down there to some of those eating places. And we strategized as to how, why, and we can't get folks to come down there. He made a suggestion one time, I thought was pretty good, that they had some jumbo screens down there, like the Final Four, some things in college football where people would want to come down and maybe have some refreshment and watch the game there under that, you know, something to help drive folk to that area to use those restaurants and things there. So that's a very important thing. The city owns all that, probably want to see it successful. It seems to have a little bit of a track record of failure right now, but I don't think we've done the marketing that we need to do. We need to create something. We need to think outside the box, whether it's a jumbo screen with the College Final Four on it, or something, a band, or something to attract people that would want to come down, come to the bridge, or some little, you know, catchy phrase or something like that. So I hope in the future that we will see that area turn around and people want to come down there to enjoy and relax on a Saturday afternoon perhaps, but just keep that in mind, okay?
Councilman Butcher.
Mr. Brown, thank you so much for willing to serve as well. And Ms. Baptiste, I'm sorry, I was going to save my comments for the end, but I see people are leaving, so I figure I might as well say everything to, right now, to each one of y'all. I think that our downtown is the heart of Shreveport, and this is coming from the councilman who has a lot of area that's growing to the south. But it's important for us to, to remember downtown Shreveport. I think one of my biggest issues is, I would like to see, and I've talked to Ms. Swain about this, who does a wonderful job, by the way, some of these buildings downtown with so much history in them, I'd like to see them refurbished. I'd like to see offices going back in. I hate to see the occupancy rate downtown. And I hope that you and Ms. Baptiste will both work to try to get our occupancy up downtown and restore these old buildings. And let's talk about the history. I'm really impressed whenever I hear the history of Shreveport, and I think that Ms. Swain and Marty at the Spring Museum and Dr. Joyner and everybody is doing a really good job promoting that because the history of these buildings is just amazing. So, but I appreciate your willingness to serve, and if I can ever help any, let me know. And, you know, I just want everybody to keep in mind that Shreve, downtown Shreveport is very important, and I want it to stay on all of our radars. Thank you.
And I'll just add my voice to the other members of the councils who have thanked you for your willingness to serve, Mr. Brown. You and I have known each other for many years, and your humility has prevented you from giving a full recitation of your credentials this afternoon, so thank you for being here. Mr. Morrow.
Good afternoon. My name's Kenny Morrow. I live in 1150 Kellywood Drive, zip code seven eleven oh six. I work at Metro Aviation. We are just north of downtown. We were located at the downtown airport for a little over 20 years, and 11 years ago or so, we moved into what was the Solo Cut Manufacturing Facility on Holland Avenue in the city of Shreveport, but actually in Bossier Parish, so we get to pay one of the highest tax rates, sales and use tax rates in the country. Want to make, make note of that. I started work for Metro Aviation in 1995. I moved to Shreveport in 1993 to attend Centenary College, graduated from Centenary undergrad and from the MBA program, and currently am an adjunct professor with the MBA program once a year. So I appreciate your wife keeping me safe.
Thank you.
While I'm there. My wife is from Shreveport, my four children, my four boys were all born at Willis Knight and South. Mentioned I've been at Metro Aviation 23 years. I'm the chief operating officer at Metro Aviation. I am not a pilot. I'm actually an accountant by trade, passed a CPA exam, but I do not maintain a CPA certificate. Metro Aviation employs almost 1,000 aviation professionals nationwide, about 160 of those here in Shreveport, Louisiana. While I'm not a pilot, we do have about 460 that work for us, so I've got plenty of opinions whenever needed. Dr. Foster actually put me through some of the worst pain of my life 12, 13 years ago by giving me braces, but I, if you've never been to Dr. Foster's office, I strongly encourage you to visit this place. It's one of the cleanest, most efficient, most well-run doctor's offices you've ever been in, in your life. I teach operations and supply chain, supply chain management at Centenary, and I've asked him a couple of times if I can bring my class up there to see his operation. If we had an airport that looked and ran like Dr. Foster's office, we would have no problems at all. We would be in really, really good shape. Councilman Bradford, you took my talking points in your response to Dr. Foster. I agree that the Shreveport airports are a sleeping giant. I think there's a tremendous amount of economic opportunity with both of our airports. I also agree that our airports are the first impression and the last impression that many of the visitors get when they come to the city of Shreveport. We have, are awarded from the Shreveport Bossier Tourism Bureau an award each year that we, we are responsible for inhabiting over 10,000 hotel nights every year in the Shreveport Bossier area, not only from our employees that come to Shreveport, people that we interview, businesses that we want to do, do business with, businesses that want to do business with us. We actually have a flight training center, helicopter flight training center, at our facility that most of our competitors use to train their pilots. So all of those folks come through the city of Shreveport, and I personally believe that we have a great opportunity, both economic development-wise and encouraging other companies to invest in Shreveport, Northwest Louisiana, through our, through our airports. I've never considered any type of service like this. I appreciate the mayor asking me to do this. Like Dr. Foster, I've never been in this room. I've been to one Shreveport Airport Authority meeting that was about 13 years ago when we decided that the facilities that we had at the downtown airport were too cramped, too crowded. We really, really needed to grow our space. And so Mike Stanbury owns Metro Aviation. His first preference was to stay there on the airport, and actually Liz Swain helped us out at the time in coming up with a business plan to stay at the downtown airport. Bill Cooksey, who worked at the Shreveport Airport Authority for a long time, encouraged me to come to a Shreveport Airport Authority meeting to get to know the board members in advance of the next meeting, being able to present a plan as to why we wanted to expand and what we wanted to do at the Shreveport Downtown Airport. I attended that Shreveport Airport Authority Board meeting. At the end of it, Bill came to me and said, all right, you ready to go meet these folks? And I said, no, there's no way that I can encourage Mr. Stanbury to sink another penny in a piece of property that's managed by, by that group of folks that was in place at the time. It was, it was not an encouraging event. It was not an encouraging meeting. So if I can help bring some, some guidance and professionalism to that, that organization, I'm more than willing and able to do so. Love Shreveport. One of the things when I got to meet the mayor before he was elected, I told him, you know, I've never really even considered my children staying in Shreveport. I've actually always had a desire for them to move on, do something different, do something bigger, do something better, and that's a really sad thing. It's really sad that there are so many people in Shreveport that don't believe in our community enough to want their children to stay here. So I'm inspired by the mayor. I'm glad he is where he is. I'm inspired by you guys. I've been listening to the last couple of city council meetings on the internet just to try to get an idea of what I'm stepping into. And I want to, I want to be excited about my children staying in Shreveport, about building their families and their future careers in Shreveport.
Councilman Butcher.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Appreciate your willingness to serve as well. You and I had a fairly lengthy conversation on the telephone about several different aspects, and I told you I would ask this question in public because I want you to be on the record for this. And I agree with your answer, but is there any conflict of interest with you working for Metro Aviation and Metro doing business with the city of Shreveport?
I don't believe so. We're no longer, our headquarters are no longer at the downtown airport. We do have a hangar that we own, and we obviously lease that lot of land from the Shreveport Airport Authority. And then we rent a teehanger from the downtown airport. We have a couple of airplanes that we keep at the regional airport that are managed by a management company that we pay to manage those for us and store at the regional airport, but we don't pay the airport directly.
So really, no more than Dr. Foster or anybody else that rents space at the airport?
Correct.
Again, I appreciate y'all's willingness to serve. I will be asking tomorrow to delay this, just where everybody knows where I stand. I think the mayor and I had a discussion on this. I would like to see the attorney general's opinion that's been requested. I don't know if it's formally by the board or by board members or who it's coming from, but I've heard there's an AG's opinion. I think we're all aware of that. This is nothing against either one of y'all at all. I am actually, for years, have been a proponent of term limits on boards. I think that we need new blood on boards from time to time. But I just want to make sure that we're not going to get ourselves into any kind of legal because there's never been, there's never been anybody fight to stay on a board, especially the airport authority, which is mentioned in the charter. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not saying that I'm right or wrong, but I would like to at least see that. The mayor and I discussed this. If it's legal and the AG says it is, then I'm 100% behind, well, I won't say 100%, but I'm, especially y'all, the ones that I've seen that he's appointed, I am, I'm going to support him on that because I think that we elected, we wanted new leadership in Shreveport, obviously. We wanted new leadership on the council, obviously, and we got it, and we need to give him the opportunity to do that. But since a legal question has been raised by two board members, and because of their service, I think I personally owe it to them to wait to get this AG opinion. But I wanted to be on the record saying that it's nothing against either one of y'all. I think y'all would do excellent. Dr. Foster, I think your experience would be great. And just having spent a little bit of time in the dentist's office here recently, I want a clean dentist, so that makes me, that makes me feel better that you said that, Mr. Morrow. So, but I would, I'm going to make a motion to delay it just for those reasons, or postpone just for those reasons. And it's absolutely nothing against y'all. And I told the mayor that when we talked the other day on the phone. I think y'all are great candidates and would be more than willing to work with y'all if it's legal for us to do this. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Morrow, thank you for clearing up. Metro Aviation is basically a parts company, right?
No, sir. We operate about 150 helicopters and airplanes all over the United States. We provide pilots, mechanics, all the aviation staff. That's the biggest part of what we do. The other part of what we do is we complete helicopters. So when you buy a helicopter, it's not like buying a burgundy Impala with the tan leather interior. It's more like buying a 15-passenger van that has no interior, no windows. It's a five-gallon bucket, the steering wheel. You bring it to us, and we turn it into whatever you want it to be. So...
Well, just be mindful of this thought. We had, under Mayor Glover, an issue at the airport with the parking money kind of got away.
I remember that.
Remember that? That was a bad deal. Never did really get that resolved. And then we had this thing come up in the next administration about the leases. Some people said they'd been, the people that leased the land been getting a sweetheart deal, and something was said about FAA was saying that we wasn't getting enough rent and all that. So that came up. But just be mindful, and I hope all will, we made some, the city of Shreveport made some missteps, not in this particular case here, but I wanted you to understand why we're a little reluctant to squeeze the trigger so quick. It's the fact of the matter is, under the, we had a problem with the fire department, and the mayor Glover terminated the fire chief, and before he had to stay in court. And then we hired a new fire chief, and then the chief that got fired, his charges got dropped. And so we owed him a ton of money for his back. So we just want to go, it's nothing against you all, but we just want to be sure that we make the smart steps forward. So I want you to know, both of you are very much qualified and good choices. But we just, just being cautious as to how we proceed.
I'm a planner by nature. I'm just curious, was it one of the city council members or the mayor that requested this opinion?
Uh, no. I'm not sure that any other council. I know there's one requested.
You know, okay. Do you know what date that request was made?
I do not know, but I do know that it's confirmed that it's been requested.
Do you know when you expect to get an answer?
The Lord only knows. I wish I could tell you, and I hope that it comes soon because that would resolve everything.
Well, and for me, since the question's been asked, this is not something, I'm a planner as well, I don't mean, not by trade, but I can't support this for very long. I mean, if we don't get an AG's opinion pretty soon, I'm not going to be sitting here waiting three months from now because, like I said, this mayor was elected, and it's his job, and I'm not going to hold him back from doing his job for any lengthy amount of time. But I owe it to the city of Shreveport and the people that elected me to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do legally, because I don't want to be the one that gets us into another lawsuit like what Mr. Flurry's talking about. We can't afford it. I mean, we're asking y'all for $7 for trash pickup because we're broke. We got, you know, very little reserve. I just can't see us getting into a lawsuit over this. And, but, having said that, I don't want to hinder the mayor from being able to do what he wants to do with his plans. So I can tell you this, I'm willing to give it another two-week postponement, but after that, I'm more apt to go ahead and say we need to move.
Councilman Bradford.
Councilman, were you on the board?
I took myself off and then replaced myself, councilman. So if you'd like to speak first, I welcome you.
No, you said something that drew my attention when you asked, and I was hoping that this conversation wouldn't have come up during this confirmation discussion, because it really, it really is not your concern in the sense that the council is going to make a decision based on some information that we have. But you said, "How long is it going to take?" Is that, is that an issue with your confirmation of your willingness to serve?
No, I just want to know what's involved, when are we going to get started, what, I need to get things, I want to make sure that I make these meetings. So I need to get them on my calendar.
Right.
I actually went to the Shreveport Airport Authority website. I couldn't, I can't find dates for meetings. I don't, you know, so I want to make sure that I plan accordingly.
I understand, yeah.
I travel quite a bit and want to make sure that I...
And it's very prudent that you are interested to go ahead and get busy, get to work. But, let me just speak on this this way. I would never intentionally try to circumvent the mayor's authority, okay? But, but, but since this has come to the forefront of some members of the current authority are putting, putting a resistance in that we think we have the right to serve our term.
Right.
Okay. Now, it doesn't matter, and it has been confirmed that an attorney general's opinion has been, has been submitted, and we don't think it'll take that long to get back. But at the same time, out of respect for these individuals who are respected individuals in town, and to be, and to be very cautious that we don't get into anything that would create a legal presence. And I could support Councilman Butcher's suggestion and recommendation tomorrow. But at the same time, there's, there's no, there's no vacancy in the airport authority because those that are serving, serve until the new, the new candidates are confirmed. So while you want to get busy and get working, and I thank you for that because I think you and both Dr. Foster went off a great deal of expertise to the operations down there. We don't, at this point, have any vacancies. So they're going to keep meeting. I think they had a meeting last week until such time as, as the new, as the new candidate has been confirmed. And we're hoping that that doesn't be delayed too long. If indeed the recommendation or the motion that Councilman Butcher is intending to make tomorrow passes, if it doesn't pass, then we would let the chips fall where they are, you know, and the legal action that may be forced against us, we just have to deal with it. But we're trying to be very cautious in preventing any unnecessary legal action if we can.
I understand.
Thank you.
Councilman Nichols.
Mr. Morrow, you and Dr. Foster both are exceptionally well-qualified candidates for the airport authority. I commend the mayor for nominating you both, and I think you'll do a fine job. My position on a brief delay is that whenever a colleague on the council suggests such a delay for any reason, because he wants or she wants additional time to consider nomination, or because he or she has some other concern that merits a delay, my inclination is to accommodate that request, and I hope and expect that my colleagues will accommodate requests of that nature when I make them over the course of the next four years. So I will support Councilman Butcher's motion for a two-week postponement. If that motion fails, I will vote to confirm you both. If the motion carries, I will not support a further delay beyond two weeks from tomorrow. So thank you both very much for your willingness to serve the city.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Green.
Thank you. I'd just like to congratulate you all. I have another question concerning this. We keep talking about the attorney general's opinion. We don't know who submitted it. But once the attorney general get this information that this person, they sent, will they have all the facts as to what and why and the reason that we've asked you all to serve? Because I've heard a lot of nightmares about what went on before. And from my understanding, these folks that's on the board are part of what went on. So therefore, we're waiting for an attorney general's opinion. I guess I'd like to ask the lawyer, how do we get the attorney general the full report of the reasoning as to where we are so that when the attorney general just doesn't get a blanket statement from somebody who says, "Well, I know I served at the pleasure of the mayor, and it's not pleasure anymore, but I still want to stay on the board." So I don't see how we will basically balance out because we're waiting for an opinion, but the opinion that we're waiting for will not possibly have all of the facts. So if the motion fails tomorrow, I'm ready to confirm you all so we can keep moving and if we just let the chips fall where they may. Because the attorney general's not going to, he's just going to have the facts that whoever has, is not a part of this body, is not the mayor, so they're just going to have a one-sided statement. Whereas I've heard just nightmares about what was going on, about these. I've talked to Liz, and Liz, I was going to ask that you speak tomorrow, but so just be prepared. I'd just like for you to just make some comments tomorrow. And so I don't see how it's going to be balanced, but I'll be voting for you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to ask Attorney Krill to speak, but I support pretty much on the lines of Councilman Green. I don't, if, we didn't ask for the attorney general's opinion number one.
On the board, Mr. Chairman.
And I honestly think that...
If we're finished with Mr. Merrill, have him to sit.
Oh, I told him I was finished.
No, he told him then he was finished, so we, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, all right.
Continuing on then, if, and I think that, I would say the attorneys gave an opinion already, or gave their answer to the best of their ability, then we waiting on an opinion, and I think with this elephant in the room, the one wants to say where it came from, evidently one of the ladies, or one of the persons who's being taken off the board, asked for the opinion. So let's kill letting nobody know where it came from. That's where, that's where it's coming from, okay? And I don't think it's, you know, to me, it's almost, almost embarrassing to override what the city attorney has presented to the council. But I asked Ms., I had to say that, but I asked Ms. Krill if she would speak or restrain one of the two.
Yes, sir. With regard to what information will be included, what information will be included with regard to the attorney general's opinion, I cannot answer that. I did not solicit or request the opinions. Therefore, when the opinion is rendered, if an opinion is rendered, I will not necessarily be made privy to that opinion unless someone forwards it to me. I can say that the opinion that I did send out to the council with regard to this appointment was based in part on a AG opinion that followed the same lines as this same selection committee. So with regard to any other information about any opinion that could be forthcoming, I cannot necessarily provide you that information or tell you what information will or not be considered because I wasn't made privy to that.
All right. Councilman Butcher.
Mr. Chairman, it's not that it's a secret who asked this. My hesitation is, we don't know if it came from the airport authority board or from an individual. We don't, we don't have, so I'm not going to say who. We know it came from somebody on the board, but it didn't come as a whole. Now, if we want to split hairs, we could make a motion to have one ourself as this body, but we can't individually go for an attorney general's opinion. That's up to the mayor or to the body as a whole. I would hope that the facts that they're given are what, you know, what the charter, what the city charter says. And that's where it kind of gets convoluted is because the city charter, the opinion that Ms. Krill, with all due respect, gave us was about the Port Authority or the Port Commission, which is, you know, it's two parishes, it's Caddo, it's Shreveport, it's... So I would, this has never come up before with the airport authority. So, I mean, the only reason I didn't, well, it did, and it settled, and the people remained on the board. Is that right? From when, it's Hershey Wilson, is that right?
Hershey Jones.
Hershey Jones, yeah, yeah. He remained on the board. So I just want to, I want to make sure that we're doing everything, and it's no disrespect to Ms. Krill. And the only reason that I didn't request an attorney general's opinion is because I thought it was counterproductive for us to delay this any further than what, than what we are. If we've got one coming up on the table, I just feel like it would be something to look at just due to the fact that this is, the airport authority was created in the charter, the port authority was not. So that's, you know, and I'm not trying to go, like Councilman Bradford said, this is nothing against the mayor and his authority. This is just, we're trying to do our due diligence to make sure we don't get into another storm that we don't need right now. We've got other fish to be frying besides two people that are going to be on the airport board, you know? I mean, that's just, that's just the facts of the matter. So let's wait two, let's wait two weeks, see where we are. And it's no disrespectful to the mayor, it's no disrespect to Ms. Krill. It's not given special treatment because I can promise you, if Mr. Morrow and Dr. Foster were on the opposite end of the table, I'd be doing the same dead gum thing for them. So that's why I am making a motion to delay. And I will also say this, that if it fails tomorrow, I will be voting for those two gentlemen. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Butcher, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, you and Councilman Bradford remember the case that we had on 3132 with Willis Knighton?
Yes, sir.
They said you guys were employees of Willis Knighton.
Yes, sir.
And they, somebody, somewhere, someday, went around and got attorney general's opinion. And it was the city attorney, right?
Yes, sir.
So I don't know why Ms. Krill didn't go and get an attorney general opinion, but she didn't. And so let's don't forget Willis Knighton, I can't remember the mayor's name. He was city councilman of both.
Tim Larkin.
Tim Larkin versus, you remember that?
Oh, wait, let's first...
No, no.
The issue, the issue is simple. It's not, it's not a very complicated issue.
Okay.
I mean, the city attorney has, has, has the preview of giving an opinion. She's our attorney as well. She's not the mayor's attorney. She's, she's the city attorney. And her opinion is that the mayor has the authority to appoint boards and commission members at his discretion. The question, the question that we're... The question, the question that we're trying to ascertain is that do a, do a term limit, which they both have four-year term limits, and those limits have not expired, and is that the mayor have the, have the privilege of circumventing the term limit and appointing new members? Now, I have a personal opinion, but, but I think, again, the caveat here is that there are members who are resisting to be removed, and saying that if they are removed, then legal, legal action may be forthcoming. Two weeks, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to, if we can, to avoid legal, legal follow-up. And I just, I mean, there's no urgency, I don't think. It's not like we're confirming a position that we need to fulfill. So it's not, it's not, I don't even think it's a, it's a, it's an issue of who, who submit what information. The reply or the opinion is a very clear cut. Does the mayor have the authority to appoint at his will, regardless of if they not served out their term? That's, I think that's a very, very clear opinion of anybody, and the city attorney has the opinion that the mayor has that authority. Others have that opinion. Those, the individuals who are challenging that, that authority from the mayor is saying, we don't believe that's the case. They have, and has been confirmed, have forwarded an opinion, asking and requesting opinion from the Attorney General, and I'm just saying, I don't think it would be unreasonable for us to at least consider that, that reply.
Okay, I got that. Councilman Green also said there was some foolishness going on, and I know Mayor Jackson and I'm trying to, would you be willing to share that foolishness, so we'll know?
I don't, I don't think I said foolishness.
Was some stuff, was stuff equals foolish.
There were different issues that went on. For instance, from my understanding, the previous director of the airport raised the rent, I forgot how much. Liz, could you speak to that? How much that was the rent?
Liz, not on airport.
She know about it. How much did they raise the rent over there, Liz? They sent letters out?
It was between 20 and 50 percent.
But, but the mayor knew about all that?
Oh, I wasn't talking about the mayor, I was just...
I'm talking about the previous mayor.
No, I was about, I was about saying...
The previous mayor. The mayor at the time. No, wait a minute. I'm talking about the previous mayor, is what I'm saying. She knew about that.
Oh, I don't know about, I'm just saying what I heard and what they said. My next question, since you asked me, was that, they said they'll take legal action, does that mean they gonna sue us? Because I got nine grandchildren, I'd be glad to turn over, who they gonna sue?
Well, I assume that, I don't know, I'm not, I'd have to defer that to Councilman Bradford, but I'm sure we'd have some kind of immunity to that.
Okay. Well, I mean, any, any entity of the city has to be represented by the city. Any entity of the city. We just had, we just had legal action brought against us two weeks ago. Y'all, y'all remember that? And it wasn't directly this, this body, it was, it was, it was a department or entity of the city. And if there's action, legal action brought against any, any part of the city, it includes the city, and it includes us having to defend ourselves in court, which, which in turn require some compensation to attorneys. And I'm saying, if that's the case, two weeks is not an unreasonable request to get that, to get that. And we can pursue on our own merits to expedite getting that opinion in two weeks. I know we can.
Councilman Flair, when I did, when I was employed for Willis Knighton, I asked City Attorney Bradford about that opinion to make sure that I wasn't doing some, I didn't have no business to do, so that's, that's where that came from, on the attorney reaching out to Attorney General on that one. All right. Attorney Crell, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a point of clarification, I don't intend to belabor the point, but the opinion that I issued to Councilman Nicholson with regard to this issue of the Airport Authority appointment were not based in part on the construction of the Port Authority as detailed in that AG opinion that was circulated. My opinion was based on the analysis of whether or not the provision that created the Airport Board was silent on the issue of removal, as was the provision in the Airport Board creation documents and terms indicated that it too was silent on the issue of whether or not someone could be removed pre-term. So I just want that to be clear for the record. My opinion was based solely on, regarding solely about whether or not someone could be removed pre-term. Also, to answer Councilman Flurey's inquiry about whether, why I didn't seek an AG opinion, with all due respect, I didn't feel like I needed to, because I already had this authority before me, as well as the information from my own charter. So I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear as to where my analysis came from and what it pertained to specifically. Thanks.
Councilman Nicholson. Mr. Chairman, as Ms. Crell just mentioned, I requested an opinion from her regarding this matter. She provided me a prompt and well-reasoned response, and my intention to support Councilman Butcher's motion for a brief postponement has nothing to do with whether or not I have faith in her work as city attorney. I do. One of the suggestions that Ms. Crell made to me in our communications was that if the council thinks the charter and the operative ordinances are ambiguous regarding the mayor's authority to replace Airport Authority members before the conclusion of their term, then it is free to resolve that ambiguity by ordinance. And given the discussion that we're having today, I hope that we as a body will set our minds to doing that. I'm undecided about what I think the rule should be, but if, if we want to impose a rule on this mayor and future mayors, that he will not have the authority to remove Airport Authority Board members or other board members without cause, then we could consider doing that. I can, I can envision some problems with going that route, but we ought to have that conversation, and at least for the next four years, decide what we think the rule ought to be, and then impose it, so that we don't have to have this conversation the next time the issue arises. Thank you. All right. Councilman Green.
Is that it?
No, I'm done.
Okay. All right. Step back, I forgot where we was now. Still on the point. I ain't leaving y'all no more. All right. There are no items under consent agenda? Okay. Ms. Jones, would you continue? I'm sorry.
Resolution 41, authorizing Glenda Denny Baxter at 9451 Lenwood Avenue to make a connection to the City of Shreveport's water and/or sewer system. Can we keep going? Resolution 36 is amending portions of Section 1 of the Shreveport, Louisiana City Council Rule of Procedure. 39 is authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Shreveport and Planet Aqua Group Foundation relative to affixing permanent storm drain markers on designated storm drains during an ocean day event in downtown Shreveport. Resolution 42 is proclaiming April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Shreveport. Resolution 43 is recognizing Marvin Jappard-Jaws Williams and to dedicate Gloria Drive at Henry Street in honor of Marvin Jappard-Jaws Williams for his commitment and contribution to Moretown and the City of Shreveport. Resolution 44, a resolution in opposition of all proposed legislation that transfers the administration and collection of local sales and use taxes to the Louisiana Department of Revenue. Resolution 45 dedicating Mandalane Street and Robert Street in honor of the late Reverend Woodrow Kimball, Jr. for his commitment and contributions to Moretown and the City of Shreveport. Resolution 46, recognizing Dr. Calvin Kimball and to dedicate Ellison Street at Hollywood Avenue in honor of Dr. Calvin Kimball for his commitment and contributions to Moretown and the City of Shreveport.
All right. Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two, two inquiries. My first one is to Councilman Nicholson regarding Resolution 36. You asked that this be postponed. You have any new, new position or considerations of this?
Councilman Bradford, my position has not changed. I think this changes would improve the operations of our meetings. Councilman Butcher, I believe, at the last meeting expressed some concern about the impact that this change would have on professionals who are on the clock, appearing before the council. I think we can accommodate those concerns without revising the proposed resolution, and so I hope that you and our other colleagues will support it.
Do anybody remember what time we adjourned two weeks ago?
9:30.
It wasn't that late. It wasn't that late. It wasn't...
I got to be in late.
It was after 8 o'clock.
It was like 8:15, 8:14.
Okay, now, now, I asked that question for this. Now, the other bodies, you do know, and we had an intergovernmental meeting on Friday, and I missed some of you guys, but my point was, we asked, according to charter, that you submit a request to speak at 3 o'clock. And most members are here. Items on the agenda was taken up early in the meeting, whereas in the school board and parish commission meeting, all items, gen items and non-gen items were taken up early in the meeting. We had individuals that sit here from 3 o'clock until at least 7:30 to talk about items that wasn't on the agenda. We are paid, well, we're not paid, we're given a tip to stay here and take care of the business of the city, but my point is that I think it's unfair for us to require individuals to be here for four or five hours to wait to speak on items that all they want to do is make, make, make their feelings and expressions known. I don't think it'll take nothing away from the meeting. It'll, it'll really, it'll really show that we are citizen-friendly, so I support that.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Chair. Councilman Green.
As long as he's done running Sunday, I'm good.
I don't know if I can make promises after some of the business we had.
Now, you wasn't here, because you're from that district, but I, but I got some people to my left would tell me that there was a council member from District F that would stay here till 8:00, 9:00 o'clock, every meeting.
Every meeting. That's right. All right. Ms. Jones, introduction of resolution.
Resolution 47, authorizing the mayor and/or Shreveport Police Chief to execute a memorandum of agreement between the City of Shreveport Police Department and Louisiana National Guard for the purpose of setting forth the policies and procedures concerning the management, use, and support of National Guard equipment and its personnel assigned to conduct, conduct counter-drug support missions. Resolution 48 is authorizing the mayor to execute a permanent utility servitude agreement between the City of Shreveport and Ascension Classical School herein after called owner and acting herein through John Montgomery Board President for the Sanitary Sewer, Main along Southern Loop. Resolution 49 is authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the City of Shreveport and Ascension Classical School herein, here and called owner and acting herein through John Montgomery Board President for the Sanitary Sewer Main and related facilities along Southern Loop to serve Ascension Classical School. Resolution 50 is authorizing the mayor to execute a permanent utility servitude agreement between the City of Shreveport and A.B. Glenn Properties LLC herein after called owner and acting herein through Robert Aiello for the Sanitary Sewer Main along Southern Loop. Resolution 51 is authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Film Price Foundation, Inc. Resolution 52 is authorizing the donation of surplus property, specifically motorized vehicles of the City of Shreveport Police Department, which are not needed for public purposes, to a political subdivision.
Okay. There are no discussions on the introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance number 32 is an ordinance levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 15.3 mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, for the year 2019, for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the outstanding general obligation bond of the City of Shreveport. Ordinance 33 is levying and authorizing the collection of various taxes along totaling 17.65 mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the City of Shreveport for the year of 2019, in the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Ordinance 34 is levying and authorizing the collection of a tax of 8.64 mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the bounds of the Downtown Development District of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, as defined by L.A. Rev. Statute 33.2740.38 for the year 2019, in the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Ordinance 35, a serious ordinance pursuant to general obligation, excuse me, general bond ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $20 million principal amount of taxable water and sewer revenue bonds for the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, as provided in a notice of intent given by Resolution Number 23 of 2018, adopted on March 13, 2018, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, providing and confirming the sale of such bonds to the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, pledging the net revenues of the city's combined water and sewer system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds. Ordinance 36 is revising Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordinances in regards to provisions for flood hazard reduction. Ordinance 37 is amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana 2017 Capital Improvement Budget. Ordinance 38 is amending the 2019 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 39 is amending the 2019 General Budget for the General Fund. Ordinance 40 is amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana 2019 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 41 is amending the 2019 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 42 is amending the 2019 General Fund Budget. 43 is adopting the 2019 Solid Waste Enterprise Fund Budget. Ordinance 44 is amending the City of Shreveport 2019 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 45 is amending the 2019 Riverfront Development Fund Budget. Ordinance 46 is annexation tag number 18-04 to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana by annexing the Gulf Ridge Commercial Division Development in Section 8, T-16 North, R-13 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Ordinance 47 is a serious ordinance pursuant to the general bond ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $100 million of water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2019 B, and water and sewer revenue bonds, Junior Lining Series 2019 C, of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenues of the system to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms, and conditions of said bonds. Ordinance 48 is authorizing the city to close and restrict vehicular access to Lake Street from Commerce Street to Sciport Center. Ordinance 49 is to revise Chapter 2, Article 2, titled City Council of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to the formal creation and codification of the Shreveport City Council Audit and Finance Committee, and to reorganize sections and divisions within Article 2.
Okay. Councilman Butcher.
On ordinance number 46, Mr. Furlong, if you wouldn't mind, since we talk about urban sprawl so much, I want to explain this is not urban sprawl. So I kinda want to tell the council exactly what we're doing here.
Yes, sir, the annexation?
Yes, sir.
In Ellerby?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so this is a bank development. The large portion of the lot is within the city limits. However, they're adding a small piece of property to this lot, which is a closure of a van event of a parish road, and that parish road was outside the city limits. So this is an annexation of a very small piece of property into the larger lot of the bank.
How will, how will the people that live outside the city on Gulf Ridge access this now, if they're abandoning, abandoning Gulf Ridge?
There'll still be a drive.
Okay.
But there'll be an agreement between the property owners.
The bank, okay. And just for everybody on the council to know, we don't have much discussion about tomorrow, this, this is a catty corner to the...
There'll be an agreement between the property owners.
The bank, okay. And just for everybody on the council to know, we don't have much discussion about it tomorrow. This is a catty corner to the Kroger development, the Forbin, Camp Forbin development, and pretty much everything on that side of the road. This is on the east side of the road, just to the north of Camp Forbin. Pretty much all of that has already been annexed into the city. I think everything on either side is in the city. So, this is a very small piece of land, and I've talked to the developers, and so I'd ask for support tomorrow on this.
All right. Anyone else? I'm sorry, I had to step out for a minute, but in regards to forty forty-three, is that ensuring that the is that the sanitation workers are all compensated appropriately?
Yes, sir, that includes everyone.
Okay. And okay, because that was some, I mean, I think all the councilmen got that feedback, and so I'm glad we cleared that up.
Yeah, now, to clear it up for the record, with the CDL drivers that we initially, the conversation initially surrounded, as the conversation evolved, not just giving them the raise that made them make competitive wages for the region, but what it did was it also, we had to create some space between the managers and the CDL drivers, and we had to make sure that we gave all the sanitation workers, including the helpers on the truck. So, yeah, the ordinance that you're looking at at forty-three ensures that all sanitation workers will be getting a raise.
Great. Thank you. We needed that to happen, so. And I made a couple of statements in the media, and I'm going to stand by the statements that give us a year to move this city forward, infuse new economics, and I think we can do better for all of our people. And I'm hoping that we can work together to make that happen.
Councilman, another thing I want to point out, and I sent it to an email to you all, but the swap program that's going to be administered with the sanitation fee for those on fixed income and those who qualify being economically disadvantaged, we've put it online. Now, there's e-enrollment, so if people are wondering how to sign up, they can just go to shreveportla.gov, and they'll be able to find how to sign up right there on the internet. And before, even the money that was allocated for swap program in those struggling households, about only half of it was being used. So, this gives it more access for people who, you know, have come, have sent you all emails about the financial burden that would place on them, sent me emails. This gives them more access to our program so they can get some financial relief.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Jones, we're down to ordinance on second reading and final passage.
Ordinance twenty-six is to revise Article Four, Division Three A of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to the duties and responsibilities of the Deputy Chief of Police. Ordinance twenty-seven, to repeal and replace Article Seven purchases in Chapter Twenty-Six Finance of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to purchases. Ordinance twenty-eight is to revise Chapter One oh five Wireless Telecommunications Facilities of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to small wireless facilities. Ordinance twenty-nine is amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, two thousand nineteen capital improvements budget. Ordinance thirty is zoning case number C dash eleven dash nineteen, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on both sides of Corporate Drive, northwest corner of Barton Drive and Caddo Hula Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I two Heavy Industrial District to I one Light Industrial District. Ordinance thirty-one is zoning case number C dash seventeen dash nineteen, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of East Kings Highway, approximately one hundred and fifty feet south of Captain H. M. Shreve Boulevard, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R I seven Single Family Residential District to C one Neighborhood Commercial District.
All right. I had, Councilman Butcher, I'm sorry.
I had a meeting with several parties that are involved in the zoning issue, ordinance number thirty-one for the Haven. I had mentioned in the last meeting that traffic was one of my major concerns there, and then also there's a easement that had never been recorded that goes into the subdivision that Mr. Locke had never, that goes across this this particular property that had never been recorded. That sewer main is the main sewer system going into the Haven subdivision. So, a lot of the residents were extremely concerned about that. On Thursday, myself and Mr. Clark with the MPC spoke to several of the residents in there about this issue, and then I think everybody's received a letter from Mr. Locke as well. All the councilmen should have received this. I had thought about possibly asking for a delay on this, but with this recorded act of donation for the servitude for the sewer system, I'm kind of leaning on going ahead and, let's go ahead and do a vote. The owner is ready to have a resolution on this, and I support him on that. Mr. Furlong, what, you sent an email out the other day about this. Is this that he gave us? Have you seen this yet? Do we have another copy from Patrick? Yeah, you just got it here recently. This was recorded this morning, and he just actually got it to the council office, I guess, from lunchtime, a little bit after, right?
Yeah, we only had six copies, and we gave it to all of you, although we would use one.
Is this, is this going to take care of the issue that the homeowners are having with their sewer main? I hate to put you on the spot, but if you'd rather me ask it tomorrow, I can.
Yeah, if you can give me a little bit of time to look into this.
Okay. I think that that was my biggest concern. The other issue is, how did we get, and I don't know if that's that's Mr. Norman or you or who, but I wouldn't mind having a traffic study coming in and out of that subdivision. I think that, well, right now, I think that Mr. Norman is working on some Mr. Norman, why don't you come up and tell the council about that, too? We can kind of alleviate some of this tomorrow. If you've looked at how the property is, there's an entrance and an exit that goes into East Kings Highway from the Haven, and there's five hundred and something homes there. East Kings merges near LSUS here, goes from a four-lane to a two-lane. So, the concern is if we put a commercial property there, that there's going to be more accidents. The other aspect is, and I think Mr. Clark and I talked about this, is LSUS has put a road in to the Bird Stadium that's a gravel road, and I'm not sure that that curb cut is legal. So, somebody needs to kind of look into that. So, that's creating problems because it comes right into where the Haven is. Is there any way we can get a traffic study done there?
Yes, we can have our traffic engineers make a look at it, and I do know that we're working presently that area, that intersection needs to be restripped. It's been a long going issue about what to do with the turn lanes and how it coming to be I guess it'd be the easternmost lane coming from south to north. Well, two-lane to four-lane end up being a straight-through lane, and then the turn lane coming out of the Haven going north will be just for a turn lane for that traffic merge into the four-lane. But I have not looked at the section gravel section you're talking about. I'll be happy to have our traffic engineer take a look at that also.
I just, I can't remember if there ever was anything done there, if we gave the authority for LSUS to cut in there for that. It seems to me that that road probably should come off of University Place, off LSUS's property into there. I think that would be a lot easier. But I think that that's some of the concerns that the residents have, is you've got the teak coming in there, you've got the merger coming in, you're going to put a commercial development here. So, I do think that, for the rest of the council members, this is something that was planned. Mr. Locke had always had this development planned to have commercial in the front, and from what Mr. Clark has said, and I'll ask him to speak tomorrow if you can be here, this is just right and wrong that was done when UDC came through. So, but I did want to have you on the record, since you probably will be here tomorrow, Mr. Norman, to, let's go ahead and try to get a traffic count there to see if a light would be possible, especially if we keep that gravel road there, because when they're having baseball tournaments and everything, coming out of that gravel road, it is presenting a problem.
I can't remember. Something last year came up. Was it last year or the year before that? I don't know if Mr. Thompson remembers, but that discussion came up about that gravel road last year, I believe. We didn't, I don't know if we did nothing official, but I remember the conversation came up, and I can't remember if a study was already done or not, so.
I know it's not a curb cut. It's pretty much just a gravel road that goes over the curb. So, I would bet that nothing has been done about that, but I can, if I lived there and had a small commercial development going there and had all these different ingredients going together, I probably wouldn't be real happy, but I am going to vote in favor of the zoning, just for my colleagues know, just because I think we're right and wrong, but I do think that we're we're trying to solve these problems before we have a real issue.
That area has been used for a long time. Having a son that used to play soccer practice in that area, and I need the members to know, it's a big, one years ago, that they were accessing those areas, so. I'll be happy to check. Michael Aron, our traffic engineer is on Military League this week. So, as soon as he gets back, I'll have to start to take a look at it.
I just want, I just want the citizens in the Haven, since there are five hundred and some odd houses back there, it's pretty, it's ninety-seven percent complete now, ninety-nine percent complete, so there's not going to be any new development. But I want them to know that the city is at least hearing their concerns and that we're looking at making sure that, in fact, I said, "Well, if we get a traffic light there," and some of them said, "Well, we don't really want a traffic light." And I said, "Well, I mean, you know, if there's a traffic issue there," but I think we've already taken steps, thanks to Councilman Corbin and a few other people in there, to try to get that striking done correctly. All right, thank you all. I appreciate it.
I've looked at the servitude agreement.
Okay, what do you think? Is it sufficient?
Well, so, the water in the sewer in the Haven is all private. It's owned by the Homeowners Association. So, the sewer force main leaving the neighborhood cuts through this property.
Right.
So, I guess the neighbors want to make sure that they have rights to that pipe, if they ever have to maintain it in the future, which they will. This is a donation servitude agreement. It's only signed by one party, thankfully. Agreements of this nature are signed by both parties, but that's more of a legal question, so if the Homeowners Association is satisfied with this, then everything's taken care of.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure, and from what I understand, it's already in an AEP servitude agreement, some power lines, so I don't think they could ever build on top of that anywhere. Thank, if you're going to be here tomorrow to answer any questions, if they might now? If you're not, there'll be deal. I'll, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nick, Councilman Butcher, have you reached out to Chancellor Clark about that?
No, this was all brought to me on Thursday, so I hadn't had a chance to, and, of course, I don't want to do anything to mess LSUS up in any way, but I do see if we are going to put a small commercial development there, especially during summertime or soccer games, it's going to be it's going to be a problem.
All right. Guess I'm next. Yep. I just, can you give me a, make sure I have a good understanding on twenty-six and twenty-seven, please?
Okay, twenty-six, that's regarding the deputy chief positions. Is that what you're asking for clarification on?
Yes, ma'am, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Okay. Chief Raymond is coming up to address twenty-six.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
So, the current ordinance, as it is written, states the deputy chief shall, I'm looking at it, take the place of the chief in his absence. The way that the department believes it should be interpreted is that he should take his place of the chief in short durations. So, the chief's on vacation for a week, chief's sick for a week, chief's out of town for a week. In the instance that you have now, where the chief is extended leave for a known amount of time, six months to a year, it's not, we don't believe it's intended for the deputy chief to take the chief's position, so this just changes the wording within ordinance. And we're going to change wording within our policy to be consistent with that.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that's what it was, shell. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
So, what's the alternative?
The alternative, I guess we leave it as it is, in which it's somewhat ambiguous because it's somewhat a confrontation with civil service law allows for. Civil service law allows for a substitute or provisional appointment in the absence of the classified position. The statute says the deputy chief shall act on behalf of the chief in the chief's absence, so it's not clear.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, yes, you know, my, chief, I've spoken to a lot of people about this, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls about it, and I spoke to some people and read the minutes about this whenever this position was created, and I think that was the intent when it was created. Now, you're the manager and you're the chief now, and if you're saying it's not needed now, I think one of the biggest things for creating the deputy chief position is you had all the assistant chiefs, but you had nobody really that was directly in charge of the department if the chief was not there.
Correct.
And my concern still stands where it is right now. We are in a process right now that the police department is very fluid, not by any of our choice, by any means. I don't think the mayor's fault, our fault, your fault, but the mayor does, you know, we're given a chief's test. I would prefer for us to wait and see before we do this if whoever is the permanent chief feels that this is something that needs to be done. We're only talking about a couple of months. Could we table it for a couple of months? I mean, I don't think it's
And we're not, this statute's not in any way saying that a deputy chief's going to be appointed, but I would compare it to, if I've got a person working out of class as a sergeant, and this was done when I was an officer, but it hasn't been done several years, in narcotics, if I had a sergeant narcotics that went out for an injury, they would work the senior court as the sergeant, because that person has some knowledge about that job. After thirty days, by civil service law, you make sergeants pay. It's fair, so to speak. If I've got a deputy chief working out of class for six months, he's making deputy chief's pay, which is two-thirds of chief's pay. I think that's kind of where you have the
I agree with that one hundred percent. Whenever I was a fire chief, I didn't have an assistant chief that was civil service. When I would leave, my senior captain fell into my position when I was out of town, and he was paid out of class chief's pay. So, I agree, I agree one hundred percent with you on that. I just think that this is just a management decision, and I would prefer us get Chief Crump, let him decide what he's going to end up doing, if he's going to retire, if he's going to take permanent sick leave, whatever, and then let the mayor and his committee choose the police chief and then move on this. That's, that's just, you know, because it's more of a management issue, I think, than it is for us to be able to dictate what we need to do and what we don't need to do, but once we change it, I don't want somebody coming up here and saying, "Well, we really didn't intend for this. Budgetary-wise, I want this." But I know exactly what you're saying. I mean, if the deputy chief's doing that job, he needs to be being compensated out of class, so. Mayor, do you have anything on that?
Not particularly on that. I'm thinking I agree with you about having the next police chief to weigh in on this. I would have to look at what the cons be of, or I guess what the pros and cons would be of trying to expedite this. I'm not sure if I see a reason to expedite it right now. I was really just going to talk about an update on the police chief selection committee. We started the civil service bar, the civil service board opened up an exam that'll be administered in May, and we have eight applicants, seven of, and you can correct me, eight applicants, correct, chief? Eight applicants, seven of which are internal to SPD.
All are internal.
All are internal to SPD, and we had two that initially applied, I think, that were outside that have since removed their name. So, we have eight applicants from SPD, and we'll be making our announcement within the next two weeks on who will be, who will comprise that police chief selection committee going forward. Just wanted to give an update on that, since we touched the topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I want to be clear now. If, if, if the chief of police is out for a week, the deputy chief can handle that. But if he submits or something happens, that's what the scenario is, that he's off for any unforeseen at the time, the deputy can't perform those duties uncompensated. So, wouldn't, wouldn't, that will trigger the mayor to make a, to make a substitute or conventional mayor to, to make a, to make a substitute or conventional shift within, within that period?
Well, and I believe that's, that's the question right now, so there's some discrepancies, some question. Obviously, it's been resolved, I'm the provisional police chief, I was not the deputy chief, we don't have a deputy chief right now, but the question that was posed in November by some members of the civil service board, and even the civil service board agreed that there's conflicting statutes. So you have the deputy chief civil service classification that says this person shall act in the absence of chief of police, but then you have the civil service statute that says, in the absence of a classified member, you appoint a terminate, temporary or substitute appointment, which is what I am, and so there's some discrepancies, so the statutes kind of contradict one another. I guess technically you could have done either, up until the point the chief didn't retire, then you'd have had to appoint a provisional or a substitute.
Well, I think, I think the, the different statutes, civil service and city charter is conflicted throughout. I mean, I mean, what bothers me more, more than anything else is that when, when this body is, is handcuffed with the ability to govern, say, for instance, the fire and police departments, when we are accountable for their budget and for their oversight, but yet, this, when it comes to certain aspects of the, of the, of the, of the review, we can't do it, we don't have the authority to do it. So, so the conflicts are always there, but I'm saying that in, in, in this specific case, it appears that the, I mean, this, what happened with Chief Crump was an unfortunate situation, but with prior knowledge that I'm gonna go on medical leave for any length of time, the mayor could act to, to really address this, this long-term absence in a more, in a more expeditious way to make sure that, that duties are not, are not being done without proper compensation. So, so I, I mean, what I was saying is that, I think I agree with the Councilman Busher, that's what I was saying, in the long term, okay?
And I think, I think my whole thing is this, we would expect a deputy chief to be at a level that he could be the chief, or she could be the chief.
Yeah.
That's why we're putting those people in that position.
Right.
Now, maybe, maybe something needs to be changed internally, that if they're over an X amount of time, say, two, three months, then that person needs to receive out-of-class pay, and that's, that's up to the mayor, and of course, I would support anything that the mayor wanted to do on this, but I just don't want us to get in, because I think right now, we are throwing money down the toilet with the way this has been set up, and it's not your fault, Mayor, and it's not your fault, chief, at all, but I don't want us ever to get into another position where we're, we're paying two chiefs, we're not paying a deputy chief now, but we were, a deputy chief, a chief's aide, I just think that that's just irresponsibility on our part as a city. So I want us to try, whoever the next chief is, for us to come up with some kind of solution when we're not there, and I'm not sure that this is it, but it's, it's getting there, but I want that person, whoever is the chief at that point, that the mayor appoints, to have some say on that. So, no disrespect to you, chief, I respect you, I think you've done a good job, I just, I want to make sure that we're not in a position where, that we're in now, three years down the road.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman, yes, sir. Councilman Bradford?
Go ahead, I'm over there.
They talking about different things, if you're still talking about this subject, I still got the flow, so.
This subject, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Why do we have a deputy chief? Because of state law, right?
Correct. Simple, civil service law.
Yeah. It's mandated in the state of Louisiana.
Yes, sir.
That we have certain criteria.
Well, it's, it's not mandated, no, we, we, our board approached legislation, legislator, legislator in two thousand twelve, I believe actually Chief Whitmore began this process in two thousand ten, took a couple of years to pass to allow us to have a deputy chief, but, you know, every municipality, although we all are under civil service laws, a little different. So, for example, Boga City, has three deputy chiefs, they don't have assistant chiefs as we do. They have three deputy chiefs that run their divisions, we have assistant chiefs, ours are promoted, theirs are prepared. So, we approached them, we being the department in the civil service, said we would like a deputy chief for the Shreveport Police Department, but it's not mandated, there are some agencies that don't have deputy chiefs.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up, sir.
Okay. Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Thank you, chief.
Ms. Jones on twenty-seven.
Mr. Chairman, that's my legislation, would you like me to... Excuse me, Ms. Jones, please, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'll defer to you since that's your legislation.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance twenty-seven will make several changes, and I'll briefly address changes that should not be controversial in the least and should enjoy the support of the full council. As the fact sheet indicates, the city's existing purchasing regulations and procedures manual has been revised piecemeal over the past several decades, and according to our city attorney's office, contains many inconsistencies. This ordinance would require our purchasing agent or her designee to produce a new purchasing policy, and to present that to us in approximately six months' time for our approval. This, in my view, is, is just administrative housekeeping that we should certainly proceed with, and there's no reason that any member of the council should oppose that part of this legislation. The other change that this ordinance would make, and which has been the subject of some discussion at previous council meetings, is that it would require the implementation of a competitive process for the selection of bond counsel and other professionals who assist the city with the issuance of bonds. This change would bring our community in line with best practices as issued by the Government Finance Officers Association. It would bring the practices of the city of Shreveport in line with those of many cities, including New Orleans, Atlanta, Georgia, cities in Texas to the west, and in some cases, Mississippi to the east. I know that there has been some suggestion that this would deprive the mayor of authority that he should have, and I will just reiterate that the motivation for this ordinance has nothing to do with anything Mayor Perkins or his staff have done. This addresses a policy that has been in place for multiple administrations, under which bond lawyers and other professionals who assist the city have been selected without a competitive process. I made a commitment when I ran for city council to do everything I could to increase the transparency of city government, and to make sure that we implemented procedures and processes that would ensure that the decisions made on behalf of the city, both by this body, by the mayor's office, and by city employees, were all in the interest of the citizens. A competitive process for the selection of bond counsel would be one step in that direction, and I do hope, Mr. Chairman, that you and our colleagues on the council will support this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, and in six, make sure I got that right, in six months, you're requesting them to have what in place again, now?
This ordinance would require the purchasing agent or her designee to produce for our approval a new purchasing policy that would implement rules and regulations for the expenditure of city funds, and we would review and presumably after whatever changes we thought appropriate, would approve that policy.
The council will.
But, ye- yes, Mr. Chairman, the council will.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Councilman Bradford?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, let me, let me preference my remarks by congratulating the mayor on his hundred and one day of service.
Thank you, Councilman. Congratulations.
At the last meeting, there was some comments regarding this issue, and I asked a question to the mayor, and I might ask him again, my comment was, if it's not broke, why fix it? When, when we talk about Shreveport, Louisiana, and the charter of Shreveport, not only do people say the mayor counsel formal government, they preference that by saying Shreveport has a strong mayor counsel formal government. They emphasize strong mayor, that the, 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 the creators of the charter, and I think it was chaired by former mayor Jim Gardner, understood business in the sense that certain things can't, can't be delayed for any, any period of time, and the mayor, being the full-time representative of the city, has to be given the power and authority to act, enact with, with, with a degree of, 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 of discipline to the city. And that privilege was given to the Ohana, John Hussey, Hees Bierge, Bill Williams, Keith High Tower, Cedric Glover, Ali Tyler. And I'm very, very disturbed and concerned, not that it's not a good idea, but if it's was good enough for those individuals, why would we change something that, and I, I hear you, Councilman, but I, I, I got to disagree the fact that it would, in some ways, diminish some authority and some, and some immediate action from the mayor. And my history, not your history, my history, in various aspects of, of, of experiences, have seen, I've seen where, in certain instances, when situations wasn't the way we see it, and I'm again use that term, the reality and then how we individually see it. You just mentioned a few minutes ago regarding something that said this, and we can change it.
Okay.
And I'm just saying, I don't, I don't subscribe to just changing things, because it just don't be that way all the time. Circumstances may create a situation, but it doesn't mean it's a permanent situation. But I do see us, in a way, dealing with something that has not come to issue, a critical situation where we need to provide oversight. We have oversight. The voters have oversight. Our law enforcement community have oversight. So if something, if something is not being done and it creates a detriment to, to the, to the, to the, to the resource of the city, then there's, there's, there's ways, there's ways to address that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm very kind of, and I, I, I love you in the sense that you are so conscientious, you are, you are so progressive, and, and I said from day one that we are, we are, we are, we are benefited by having your, your brains and your mind and your professionalism on this council, but at the same time, I want to always be cautious of what we are doing is, is the right thing to do, and what, not necessarily ulterior motive, but oftentimes, there are some, some differences in, in opinions in which create motives in some ways. So, may I ask you again, is it broke?
No, Councilman, my, my response is the same, no, it's not broken, and my concern is the same as far as, you know, what, this becomes a line drawing exercise, and I've asked Councilman Nicholson exactly how far would we go if we drew a line here where, you know, require council approval or an RFP process, because, I mean, just from an operational standpoint, the city processed five hundred and eighty-three contracts last year, and a majority of them were over eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars. So, is it a scale thing, because how much money we're spending, and if it's a scale thing, then again, you know, we would have to dive into potentially two hundred, three hundred plus contracts to get approval, and that wouldn't operationally allow the city to even function. So I'm just trying to figure out, again, why. There is another concern as far as from a legal standpoint as well. The city charter's in section four point two zero C says, of the city charter states, the city council should have the exclusive power to do this upon the recommendation of the mayor. So, you know, that's something that we can ask the city attorney as well, because I'm, I'm not recommending this right now as an added step, so just trying to figure out legally where is the authority to come from to pass an ordinance that would do this in the process, and again, even if we do find the authority, where do we stop?
Thank you, Mayor.
And again, I, I think, I think our success, our ability to, to, to make this city better is gonna have to be on trust and on a good, goodwill of where we see ourselves and how we want to move. Creating legislations that would bring forth, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm a fighter, I told you, my presence in the city council meetings date back forty years, so I'm not unfamiliar, I didn't show up yesterday, and, and I've seen, I've seen situations. I mean, I don't know if you know, Mayor, but in nineteen, in nineteen ninety-nine, in two thousand, there was a website that said sage shreveport dot com, sage shreveport dot com, and that, and that website was created against a mayor who they thought was running rough shot over certain aspects of the city. And, 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 and they used all type of maneuvers to gain information, and they would put it on the website, this is happening, and that's happening. Were you on the council then?
Forty years ago?
No, in nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety, no, no, nineteen ninety...
I was saying, what was like in the...
No, no, it was, it was during, well, it was during the High Tower administration.
In the late nineties, early two thousands?
In the early two thousand, yeah. So I'm ju- I'm just saying that, that there was concerns regarding how, 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 how the, the operations or the judgments of the mayor was being challenged, you know, on the other hand, but we got through that, we got through that, you know, and, and I'm just saying, I don't want, I don't want to do anything that would, that would, that would sort of lessen, lessen the mayor's ability to act, enact in a reasonable way where he's gotta be looking over his shoulder and getting approval to make decisions that he has authority to do within the charter already. I'm just not comfortable at this point in doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Busher?
I, I think accidentally, I mean, I was, want to speak on this, but I think Councilman Green should do it before.
You go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Nicholson, I, I have a question. You're, you're saying in this that, that you want them to prepare or something, but is, is, what if we don't like what they're preparing? We would have to vote on what, what they prepared, is that correct?
Yes, you're referencing the part of this ordinance that I suggested should be non-controversial, and if the, if the council does not approve of the purchasing agent's policy as presented, then we would have an opportunity to request whatever revisions the majority of the council wanted of the policy before adopting it.
See, I, I see this kind of differently than Councilman Bradford, and we've been agreeing today, so I, I hate to, I, I see this kind of as...
He spoke so kindly, I mean, I'm reluctant to disagree with him now.
If I were the mayor, I'm not quite sure, I, I wouldn't mind this to a certain extent, and I, I see what the mayor is saying as far as the, the aspect of, of time delays and making prudent decisions quickly that need to be made. I think that the way I see it is that, that we're trying to solve something that not necessarily this mayor, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, Councilman Nicholson, but not necessarily that this mayor has done, but that maybe had been done in the past and that could be done in the future. And I think we all campaigned on change, we all talked about how broken things were, we all, so in some aspect, I think some council oversight for the mayor is not a bad thing. If I were sitting in his seat, I may want to say, hey, all the ones that approved it, I'm, I'm, you know, not, not to take away any leadership that the mayor may have, but I think we should at least look into this, not just close the door on it and not use it as something that, that we're trying to slap the mayor on the hand, we're just, I, I think that this council... We're just, I, I think that this council has been charged, just like this mayor has been charged, for change. And I think that this is part of change. And we, you know, we may not agree on, on everything, but at least we're, we're trying to, uh, to do what's best for the city of Shreveport and the citizens. So uh, I'm inclined to, uh, to support my colleague on this. Um, and, and I'm glad that we're having this dialogue. And just because we don't always agree on every aspect of everything doesn't mean that either one of us are bad. We're just trying to, we're just trying to walk through this. We, we walked into some, some pretty rough seas and we're, we're all trying to learn how to negotiate through it. So I'm, I'm glad that Councilman Nicholson put this up and, and I will be supporting. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Uh, what's, no, Flir, that happens, you know? I'm gonna go with Mr. Green, but did you have something that you had to add? Go ahead, Councilman Green.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just throw it off on Councilman Bradford speaking and saying he was.
That Green's.
Yeah. He was so, he was so highly, uh, mentioning of, of Councilman Nicholson. He never told me nothing like that, so I'm trying to stay out of my feelings while I'm sitting up here right now.
I'll take it, gentlemen.
Take my feelings with myself today. I helped raise him. So, Councilman Green.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, I didn't campaign on taking power away from the mayor. So the way I see this is since we have the trust in the mayor, why not we take twenty-seven and just ask the mayor to do this without basically making it an ordinance, making it a law? We could just suggest to the mayor, hey, Mayor, we see some things that possibly needs tweaking. So how about you thinking about this rather than, I think, can't remember what state it was, may have been Carolina, where a governor, uh, he was a Democratic governor, a man became governor and the uh, Senate and Congress of that state took all this power. They said, you can be governor, but I believe it was South Carolina, you can be governor, but you ain't gonna have no power. So whatever you thought about doing before you got elected, we here to tell you today that on whatever date this is, we're gonna take all your power.
Of course, restore it.
So I just think that if this is good, let's just say to the man, we have that kind of relationship with him. Mr. Mayor, these are some things that we ran across, would you just look into it and tweak it? Instead of us saying, okay, Mayor, this is what we want you to do and that's it. Cause I have enough in my district to do now. Um, I, I got a letter here and, and Jackie had the rest of it, uh, that they was telling me that uh, the, the person before me didn't do nothing and I better get started doing something. So I don't have time to be, uh, uh.
Really? Didn't you read it? I'm serious.
So I don't have time to be doing out the mayor's job that he's supposed to be doing and what, cause they gonna be gonna vote me out of office before, four years of, so I just, I don't needing anything else on my plate. So I'll be voting against this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, I respect that the council appears to be closely divided on the question of whether the city should require a competitive process for the selection of bond counsel and other professionals. Uh, I, I will reiterate that this has been a subject of some conversation among members of the bar and others in our community for years preceding this mayor. Uh, and that my motivation in suggesting this change is to bring the city's practices in line with the best practices of, of organizations that make suggestions about how cities like ours can run better, uh, to bring our practices in line with New Orleans and Atlanta, Georgia and other large communities. There is some wisdom to the idea that we should not try to fix everything that does not appear to be broken. Uh, but I also think we as a council need to always be looking for ways to improve the transparency and the integrity of the decision-making processes by which we allocate the city's resources. We are the governing authority of the city of Shreveport. Uh, in my view, we unquestionably have the power under the charter to require this change. Uh, and, and so I just, I will say that if we decide not to implement the change, then we are, we are deciding not to bring Shreveport's practices in line uh, with what I think objectively would without question be a, a better process. Uh, the, the mayor has again raised his concern about line drawing. Uh, where does this stop if we start with bond counsel? Uh, I will, I will say that I, I think bond transactions are particularly well-suited for the employment of a competitive process for the selection of professionals because they are discrete transactions involving very large sums of money. Uh, I am not suggesting that we require a competitive selection process with a selection committee for the selection of every lawyer that represents the city. That would be impractical. Uh, that would be, in my view, an unreasonable encroachment on the authority of the executive. Uh, but this change, I think, would not be, and it would ensure, as I indicated at the last council meeting, that we have the very best available professionals helping us borrow what over time is hundreds of millions of dollars that the taxpayers will have to repay. Given the discussion we've had this afternoon, uh, my motion tomorrow is going to be to postpone ordinance twenty-seven. Uh, I am going to request that the ordinance be redrafted to separate the, uh, the, the part of the ordinance concerning which the council will split and the part that I think needs to be passed as a matter of good housekeeping. Uh, in other words, I'll, I'll segregate in a separate ordinance the bond counsel competitive selection process requirement from the new procurement code part. Uh, and, and my hope is that we can move on and approve the, the non-controversial portion of this ordinance. Uh, and, uh, and I will work hard between now and the final vote on the bond process to caucus with my colleagues and convince at least four of them to come around to my view. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And thank you, Councilman Nicholson, for your consideration and compromise. That's, that's, that's healthy, that's healthy government. But, but there's another concern, and there's some history with this concern in a way. We've had two situations to where the mayor defied the wishes of the council. And we were suing each other. The council and the mayor was in litigation against each other. Now, the mayor mentioned a minute ago that he didn't think we had the, uh, within the charter, the, 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 the preview to, uh, to do certain aspects of, of, of what this, this, and you're gonna re, re, re-modify, and I think that's a good idea, but, but if the mayor says, and you know, and a mean mayor, and it's not a mean mayor, but a mean mayor, I know some mean mayors, that would have said, you, you guys got to be out your mind. Okay? I won't, I won't, I won't sign the, the order nor would I execute if, 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 until, until, until the, the courts tell me so. Now, if he felt that way, that he, that we are stepping outside of our scope, we don't, we need to, we need to work together. We don't need dissension. We don't need things that's gonna create, uh, our ability not to move and move, and move in a very cohesive, solidarity way. And it's not gonna happen all the way. I don't, I don't root my wife every day. Matter of fact, I don't root with her a lot of times, but she's the boss, so I have to go do what she say to me.
She's listening, she know.
I told you, we just had a great week last week. We celebrated our forty-nine year of marriage. We got married teenagers and, and uh, we've had a good marriage. We never went to bed angry. But we, but there was once that we didn't go to bed for three days.
You sure about that, Flir Bradford?
Hey, you can stay at the ranch out there if you need to, after the day, if you need to stay at the ranch.
But my, but, but, but in, in seriousness, in seriousness, that uh, I don't, I don't think the mayor would, would be, would be that, I don't think that, that firm in his belief that we don't have the preview to, to do uh, what we're doing and would make us and challenge us in, in any way, I don't know. But I don't want to, I don't even want to try that. I wanna, I wanna do what's right while we can do what's right and, and, and move forward with the, in harmony, not always agreeing, but in the, in the, in the, in the spirit that we are doing what's in the best interest of the city. That's what I'm hoping that we can do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Flir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Councilman Bradford, you brought back some flashbacks speaking over there, and I want to remind you, of course, you talking about mean mayors. You wasn't talking about your cousin now, was you?
I refuse to answer that question. I'm grounds of being criminal.
But all seriousness, do you remember four years ago when we had the vote on disparity?
Yeah.
You remember that? And I was the swing vote because you took me out to the woodshed and I saw the light. And, but yet the mayor never did anything about it. Now, I'm not saying the honorable Adrian Perkins is gonna do that, but I'm just reminding you that sometimes, and you remember the Cross Bayou Resolution that we passed? And for the mayor to move it, nothing happened, mayor went silent. And only I'm saying, in these good practices, just think about this, it's just a thought. In two thousand sixteen, the city of Shreveport spent six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for tires alone. So all I'm saying, maybe some, and I'm not aiming at the administration, I'm just saying, make sure we got the best accounting practices that can be, uh, had in a manual, updated manual. I, I like that idea, but maybe we do need not go as deep, you know?
Yeah.
But just be mindful that sometimes the ball gets punny, but Mudrow don't come back down the field with it. You see what I'm saying?
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. But I'm saying again, a hundred and one days, a hundred and one days, I didn't create what y'all want to fix. That me, I think James Green, Councilman Green was, 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 I thought was more in line with what I'm thinking.
If it doesn't go silent, if it doesn't go silent, that's a good idea.
Well, I mean, I, I agree. I mean, there's, there's some issues that I'm gonna bring up at the end of the meeting that went silent.
Yeah.
That I think we need to revisit. And I'll talk about that at the time. But I'm just saying that this time, I don't want to see us doing something that I think would bring to dissension within this chamber. And I hope, I hope we can avoid that.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's yours. I have to clear them out now. I think I was on, I cleared myself out. I just, um, can anybody tell me, what, what does the state bond commission do?
Where's our financial advisor at? Come up here.
What does the state bond commission do? What do they do?
Well, state bond commission is oversight. Basically, oversight committee. Which one?
That big one.
That one. Okay. The, um, state bond commission is basically the oversight committee. So when we submit the documents to the state bond commission, we provide them an application and all the information about the city. Once they receive it, they have analysts to review the city's financials and determine whether or not the city can repay the debt and whether or not it's a, a good deal for any city. The state bond commission protects every city in, in the state from bankruptcy and, and bad deals. So that's their job. So once they review it, they put it on their agenda, and then they either recommend approval if they want some changes to the deal, they don't believe it's a good deal for the city, they'll contact us, we'll speak to the financial advisor, we go back to the drawing board and present another deal. But generally, um, the city's been approved for most, I mean, all their transactions.
Okay. And no conflict or anything at, at this particular time?
No, we submitted the information to the state bond commission, it was the same routine. Analysts reviewed it and we waiting for any information they may have about the transaction.
Okay. Okay, okay. I, I just want to make sure I was clear on what, what, what they did, and that's oversight on what you all do. And that's any bond counsel, correct?
That's, all bond counsel within the state of Louisiana. Other states, I think you mentioned Atlanta, Georgia, I don't think have a state bond commission that actually reviews bond transaction, which is a difference. But the state of Louisiana have the treasurer and the senators of the state to review the transactions in addition to the staff that does the same thing.
Okay. So any other, okay, thank you, that's what I need to, that's what I want to ask. So any other attorney that works for the city or does work for the city, who, who oversees their work?
Yeah, almost, I might do that.
That's the city attorney, correct? Okay. All right. That's what I need, I just asked. Just so I can know that. Okay. Mayor Perkins?
Um, I just want to, I guess, a bit of a closing comment and something for us to consider. I just don't want us to conflate processes with transparency. Um, processes can slow us down. Uh, transparency is still there, even if there is no process to go through council because you can just do a public records request or you can look to the administration and the measures we've already taken to be transparent. Um, we have a, we have the first citizens budget that you can pull up online and look a line by line on what our expenses are across the board. So my administration is doing everything we possibly can to be as transparent as possible, and I don't want us to conflate adding a process on to pushing transparency forward. We can be trans, just as transparent with the current charter that we're working under. And if I see any issues arise on a lack of transparency or a place where, uh, things can be inappropriate, I'll be the first to say and acknowledge, hey, we need to fix this. And, you know, uh, Councilman Nicholson, you talked about, uh, something that's non-controversial is cleaning up some of our ordinances, uh, and making them consistent with Louisiana procurement laws. I completely agree with it. We talked about that months ago. Uh, I am A-OK with doing it as well, and we look for those opportunities to make sure things are consistent, uh, and more streamlined.
Okay. Uh, this, yes, I want to say?
Well, I just said, Mayor Perkins, I appreciate your support of that portion of this ordinance. And, uh, as I said a moment ago, I will move forward with that as a separate proposition. Thank you.
And on the bidding process, if that was to happen, what you're saying is we're going to the lowest bid or we're?
Uh, uh, no. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, uh, that question because I do want it to be clear for my colleagues on the council and for members of the public that my proposition is not and has never been to have a process whereby we select lawyers or any of the professionals on the basis of a low bid. That would be a, a very poor practice because price is not a good way, at least price alone is not a good way to select professionals. Uh, but just as we have an architecture and engineering committee that assists with the selection of the professionals over which it has authority, my proposition here is that we form a committee that would make recommendations to the mayor and to the city attorney concerning bond counsel and other professionals to be selected. Uh, so, so it were my ordinance to pass as presently on the agenda, it would, it would not require the city to select any professional on the basis of, of low bid, but it would require that professionals interested in providing services to the city, uh, submit responses to a request for qualifications or requests for services that would be reviewed by a committee before that committee made recommendations to the mayor and to the city attorney.
All right. That's it on that. That's it. Anyone else think that's it? All right. Well, I forgot where we at again now. Talk too long. Now, probably, what we at?
Probably standards.
Public standards appeal. Mr. Green? Mr. Green, not Councilman Green.
Our first case is forty-nine five. To return from last council session, the roof still needs to be, well, the structure still needs to be demolished. It's pretty much the same fate that we had with the last, and we would exit on Thursday morning, structure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Thompson?
Ms. Coleman called me this morning and said that she only received our letter stating that she was supposed to appear today on Saturday. I think she should have gotten it in time to make arrangements to come, but that's what she said, she only got it Saturday. So, and she said she wasn't able to be here today because of a short notice. I asked her, would she be able to be here in two weeks? She said she would have to check her calendar and call me back. She did not call back, so immediately before this meeting, I called her and asked her, and she said that she could be here in two weeks. But I just wanted to pass that along to the council as it makes its decision.
I also called her after we had council session. I called her and let her know what position is, just like I did the last time. So, if she didn't receive the letter, she did receive a call from me to let her know what she needed to do, have been in communication with her. Matter of fact, I think I was pretty much in communication with her. So, she had been notified by phone.
I'm sure. I'm sure. Councilman Nicholson?
Mr. Chairman, this appeal concerns property in my district. I want us to extend every indulgence to property members who have difficulty complying with the property standards that every citizen is subject to, but I think we also have to be mindful of the impact that dilapidated property has on other citizens. I understand from my conversations with Mr. Green that this property owner has been given numerous opportunities to comply. She has failed to do so, and my suggestion is that we authorize the city to proceed with demolition.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second from there. It's been moved by Councilman Booch, I mean, Councilman Nicholson, and second by Councilman Bowman, to proceed. Please vote.
Motion carries with five, one out, change.
Our next case is 5231 Broadway Avenue. The owner of the property has requested more time. The first contract that she had on the property fell through, and she has another contract.
A contract on selling, right? So, she has somebody interested in buying, is what you're saying? Right. Okay. And it is secured our way?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I've talked to her and talked to Mr. Green, I'd like to just give her, she won't need that time, but I'd like to give her 90 days. Actually, she will be doing something sooner than that, but I'd just like to give her that. She's putting forth an effort.
If the councilman and the director is okay with that, I'm fine with the rest of the process.
Do we need a motion?
Please.
I'd like to have a motion.
Moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Booch. Stand for 90 days. And no other discussion, please vote. That motion carries with five and one out, change.
All right, no other appeals. Thompson, you have a closing report?
Close report. Close report. We have three new appointments to the Human Relations Commission from the mayor, Felice Williams, Mark Gavilla Campbell, and Lanny McCray. Tomorrow, the United Way will present a presentation on their 2-1-1 service, and there's an executive session scheduled for tomorrow on Larry Cunningham versus the city of Shreveport, and Superior Bar and Grill Inc. versus the city of Shreveport. And you know that on the agenda today, there are four cases for executive session.
All right. No other appeals. Are they in the reports, I mean, off the board committee? I don't think it will. Okay. Locking it up. And you say we have to go, and you say an hour for when we have to go, and...
A motion to go into executive session to discuss Larkin Development at Railsback versus the city of Shreveport, document number 599,394, First Judicial Court, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Larkin Development North LLC versus the city of Shreveport, document number 599,393, First Judicial Court, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. The Haven Property Owners Association, Inc. versus BW Partners LLC, doing businesses for our wood apartments at AL versus the city of Shreveport, document number 610530, First Judicial District Court, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. And T. Scott Bernisi, Michael Jones, and Michael DeFatta at AL versus the city of Shreveport, document number 599698, First Judicial Court, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Is there a motion and a second to that effect would be in order?
I have a motion to go in executive session.
Show them.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Johnson.
Say what?
Motion carries with four, two out of the chamber.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Flurry, did you vote?
I didn't vote.
This is to go into executive session, and these are two-thirds votes, so if we could vote again, maybe?
It's already cleared off, but I'll vote.
I'm not motion, we...
Reconsider.
We just reconsider the motion.
Second.
All right. Moved by Councilman Booch and second by Councilman Green. Please vote. And the motion carries with five and one out of the chamber. If there's nothing else, then this means this...
We'll meet in executive session in the back. No, no.